Good morning. The Prince George's County Planning Board will now come to order. As always, we commence our hearings with a moment of silence for those who have passed on in the intervening weeks since our last hearing. We're going to start with William Howard Green, was a handcuffed individual who was shot in the cruiser. Our hearts go out to his family as well. And Robert Ashton was a retired Maryland National Capitol Park Police Officer. He was the former Assistant Chief and the former FOP President for our Park Police. Debbie Flanagan, who is also with the Park and Planning Legal Department, she was retired. John Moss. John Moss was a former absolutely beloved member of the Port Towns community. He was Lieutenant Colonel in the Prince George's County Police Force, also the Chief of Police for the town of Bladensburg, and also Town Administrator for the town of Bladensburg. Just a wonderful guy and a friend to many. His classic response, when you asked him how he was doing, he quoted Mary Poppins, "practically perfect in every way." We want to recognize John Delaney, who was age 87, was a longtime attorney, actually a pioneer. He had five decades with the firm of Linnos and Blocker. Some of you here, formerly with Linnos and Blocker, knew him very, very well, but all of us in the land use community knew him very well. And he was intricately involved with the development of Montgomery County from the mid-1960s to the beginning of this century, and we will remember him as well. Mary Higgins Clark, age 92, American author and suspense novelist, kept many people up late at night. Iconic actor Kirk Douglas, age 103. 103. So the dimpled actor, who was also a big philanthropist and starred in many iconic movies such as Spartacus, so we want to remember him as well. Joe Vasco. Joseph Vasco was a former Prince George's County Police Officer. He was Acting Police Chief for a while. He was also with the Maryland State Police, the DNR Police, and the Prince George's County Sheriff's Office as well. Also, his daughter was with Maryland National Capitol Park Police, and we want to remember Joe Vasco and his family in our thoughts and prayers. Chris Dolman, age 58, was a Hall of Fame NFL Defensive End who played 10 seasons, who played 10 seasons with the Minnesota Vikings. I didn't know he was your student. I'm sorry. Okay. My condolences. The victims of the Residence Hall shooting on the campus of Texas A&amp;M. Two people were killed on February 3rd, one wounded. Jim Lehrer, longtime PBS News anchor. Willie Wood, legendary Green Bay Packers defensive back. Jim Lehrer actually interviewed people like Fidel Castro, Ayatollah Khomeini, Anwar Sadat, and so many others. Also, as I said, Willie Wood, legendary Green Bay Packers defensive back. Around the world, we want to remember the individuals impacted by a string of earthquakes. The 7.7 magnitude tremor was felt in Jamaica, Cayman Islands, Cuba, Miami. We want to remember all of those still suffering in Puerto Rico. There was a 6.7 magnitude in Istanbul, Turkey, on January 24, '36. Plus, people have died, more than 1,600 injured. We want to remember the people who have passed on and who are sick from the deadly coronavirus in China and now in other places throughout the world. So far, 362-plus people have been killed, and more than 17,000 have been affected. Confirmed cases in two dozen countries, including the United States, Japan, Germany, and France as well. I'm going to, for those of you who may have suffered a loss of which I am unaware, our hearts go out to you as well. I apologize if we've missed anyone. May we have our moment of silence? Thank you. So February is Black History Month, and we kicked off our Black History Month program in the Park and Planning Commission early, just last Sunday in January, to compensate for the short month. And we also have amazing programs throughout the year. There are bullet, I mean, throughout the month, there are brochures in the back. Please help yourself and please try to attend as many as you can because they're really fabulous. It is American, it is Library Lovers Month, it is American Heart Month, and it is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. That is so important. How many of you have teenagers of your own or teenagers in your family? Okay. Hmm. One person. Okay. Okay, well, that's okay because you know some teenagers, and studies show that one in three high school students experience physical or sexual violence by someone they're dating. Those are alarming statistics. About 1.5 million high school students annually. Nearly, that's 1.5 million. Nearly half of college women and 28 percent of men have experienced psychological aggression, and also that includes electronic aggression. I mean, there's so many ways to be abused nowadays, and there is a disconnect. When you talk to the teenagers, they will tell you those statistics are alarming. When you talk to the parents, the parents will say, "Oh, you know, this doesn't affect my kids." I mean, they believe that the statistics are very low. There is a disconnect. Watch for signs in your children, your loved ones, anybody that you know. Okay. February 6, 1788, Massachusetts became the sixth state to ratify the Constitution. 1899, it was the end of the Spanish-American War. 1918, Great Britain granted women, this is important, granted women over 30 and over the right to vote. And that was two years before the passage of the 19th Amendment granting women in the United States the right to vote. 1935, Monopoly board game was first on sale. 1943, the radio debut of Frank Sinatra. 1952, Queen Elizabeth II succeeded to the throne upon the passing of her father, King George VI, and where she still reigns, but apparently doesn't wield exactly as much influence as she thought at that point, as she did at that point. I'm going to leave that alone. 1965, Righteous Brothers. I'm looking at the audience. Their hit, You've Lost. There you go. Became number one, and we have Commissioner Geraldo singing over here. 1978 was the huge snowstorm that hit New England. It was fast and furious for 33 consecutive hours dumping 24 to 54 inches of snow. That's over, beyond the height of so many people. And I want to tell you, I got caught in that snowstorm. I was a student, and back then, the cars had antennas that, you know, that stick up, and people had to abandon their cars on the parkway, and all you could see was like the tip of the antenna. It was a mess, but we missed school for a week, and that wasn't too bad. 1988, Michael Jordan made his signature slam dunk from the free throw line, inspiring the now iconic Air Jordan and Jumpman logo. 1993 was the passing of the famed tennis champion Arthur Ashe, who won three Grand Slam titles. He was the first African-American man to win singles in Wimbledon, U.S. Open, and Australian Open. And he was just iconic, but notice I did say African-American man because Afia Gibson preceded him, and she was iconic too. You see the census logo up there. I want to make sure that everyone in Prince George's County is counted. We have flyers back there that are so imperative because we lose $18,250 that comes to the Prince George's County community per person for everyone not counted. And in 2010, that resulted in a loss of $363 million that could have benefited transportation improvements that, you know, maybe private sector wouldn't have to pay for. It benefited, and their tax dollars could go to something else. It would have benefited education schools and so much more. It is imperative that everybody is counted. It is safe. No one can use their information for anything else. They're only nine simple questions. Census is coming. You will start getting your first notices March 12th, although April 1st is officially census today. And you can now complete it online, by phone, or in person, or by mail. And so, just to put things in context, and it also determines your representation. You want to make sure you have the appropriate number of representation in Congress that you so deserve. So please make sure that we are all counted. In 1820, the United States Census was 9.6 million. 9.6 million. Right now, the pre-2020 census numbers, the United States population is over 330 million. Okay, so getting a Super Bowl, Kansas City. Who was happy about Kansas City? Okay. Boo. Okay, I was with Kansas City, so, you know, look. Can you say Mahomes? In the food department, because we're foodies up here, it's Barley Month, National Cherry Month, Great American Pies Month, National Hot Breakfast Month. I'm talking bacon, eggs, pancakes, waffles, French toast, and it's Sweet Potato Month, and February 6 is Canadian Maple Syrup Day. Next week, of course, we will be approaching Valentine's Day, so this week is National Dump Your Significant Jerk Week. So if you guys, any, if you need to take out the trash, do what you got to do in preparation for next week. Okay. Finally, we want to say Happy Birthday to Commissioner Will Dorn. Can we say Happy Birthday? Thank you. And without further ado, I'm proceeding with my agenda. We have the draft minutes of the planning board meeting of January 9, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on items for A, B, or D, or any board member who wishes to discuss these items?
Madam Chair, for consideration of the records for items for A, for B, and for D, I'm of adoption and staff finding an approval of items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are going to proceed in this order. We're going with item 11, 12, 10, 9, 7, 8, 3B. Okay. Item 11. Mr. Mason. Okay. We're going to skip over item 11. Item 12, we have a resolution. Mr. Bossy, do anything to add? Nothing to add? Okay, so we have the resolution from Detail Site Plan 19025, North Gate. I don't know that there is anyone on my sign-up sheet to speak on that matter. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is he here? Okay, we're going to go back to item 11. Okay.
For the Transportation Planning Section, I'm Brian Murnowitz. Apologies for missing the first call.
No problem.
We would like to request that the board authorize consent to inform property owners, to inform property owners of their reservation renewals, and then to authorize consent that we can receive comment from the county executive and county council regarding the four existing property continuations of reservations.
We have the staff report in front of us. Thank you very much. And there's no one on the sign-up sheet. Was there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we have two requests for continuance. So we have item 10 followed by 9.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Sherry Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item 10 is a preliminary plan of subdivision for Beltway Plaza 4-19023. By letter dated January 16, 2020, the applicant has requested a continuance of this hearing to February 20, 2020, and staff recommends approval of the continuance.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Tedesco.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matthew Tedesco of the law firm McCohey here on behalf of the applicant, submit on the letter that we submitted into the record to accommodate the city of Greenbelt's schedule. We had a work session with them on Monday, and they are due to take action this upcoming Monday, February 10. So the continuance was to accommodate both of those. So with that, we respectfully request the granting of the continuance to February 20.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Tedesco? That concludes the sign-up sheet. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak on the issue of the continuance? Is there a motion to continue this matter to February 20, 2020?
Move approval. Continuance on February 20, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 9.
Sherry Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section, once again. Item 9 is a preliminary plan of subdivision for Pecan Ridge 4-19003. By letter dated January 22, 2020, the applicant requested a continuance of this hearing to February 20, 2020, and staff is recommending approval of that continuance.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Connor? Is that you, Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Gibbs?
Good morning, Chairwoman Hewlett, members of the board. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo. I represent the applicant in this case. The continuance is occasioned by virtue of a variation request, which was needed, and the staff quite properly indicated that they couldn't act on the variation absent a memorandum from DPI. That occasioned the need for the continuance request, which we filed, because we certainly wanted to get their input into the variation request. It is, it has now been filed, but the staff was not able to prepare a report because they didn't have the referral. So that's, that's what has occasioned the continuance request, and we would appreciate your favorable consideration.
So let me make sure I'm clear, because the continuance request was to allow for a memorandum from the Department of Permitting Inspections and Enforcement, which we now have, but we didn't get it in time, the staff didn't get it in time to actually thoroughly review.
That is correct. Staff did everything they could. They just, they were waiting, and it was not their fault.
We have someone else signed up, so, so let me have that person come up, and then you'll have the opportunity to come back up. Is it Aviva?
Aviva Navesky.
Thank you.
Hi. I live at 8306 Lloyd Station Road in Bowie. I'm next door to the proposed Pecan Ridge development. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. I am not in opposition to the continuance, but my concern is that I can get no one to speak to me about this, and you as the Planning Commission get the opportunity to see things, and the planning board gets the opportunity to see things. DPI refuses to talk to me. I want to make sure that you hear my concerns so that you can take that into consideration before you take a vote on this.
Okay, so let me stop you for a second. Okay, so, do you have a copy of the memorandum from DPI?
I do not.
Okay, so we can make sure that you have that, okay? Our staff can make sure that you have that. Mr. Hunt, you'll take care of that before she leaves today?
Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs, you'll have the opportunity to have a conversation? Okay.
We, we have had conversations.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, but he wasn't near the microphone, so Mr. Gibbs has indicated for the record that they have had conversations, but, and you have a copy of our staff report as well?
Yes.
Okay. So right now, the request is to continue this matter until February 20, which you've indicated you do not have a problem with.
Correct.
So you will have the opportunity to come back, and we'll make sure that you have the memorandum from DPI. Our staff will, can talk with you, but, and Mr. Hunt can talk with you.
I would appreciate that because no one returns my phone calls, and I haven't been able to get any of the information that I've requested. I'm just stonewalled.
Okay, hold on a second. I see, I understand, but you're wandering too far from the microphone, so I'm trying to get you on the record, keep you on the record. Well, I don't know who the no one is, but our, we will make sure that our staff talks with you. I'm not in control of DPI. That's a county agency.
I understand that.
But I can make sure that our folks have a conversation with you, and then we can make sure that you have the memorandum from DPI.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? And it's Navesky?
Navesky. N-E-P-E-S-K-Y.
Got it. Okay, thank you, Ms. Navesky. Was there anyone else here to speak on this issue for, of the request for a continuance to February 20? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move the request for a continuance to 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 7. I mentioned it was Teen Dating Abuse Month, but I forgot to tell you, in theory, we were supposed to wear orange today. I didn't find that out until last night, so I did the best I could. But some, but some people, I see some people in the audience wearing it. I don't know whether they did that intentionally or it just worked out that way. Yeah. I just found out.
Just be an advocate against it.
Okay, he's ready?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Earlby with the Urban Design Section. The project before you is item 7 for conceptual site plan CSP 18007. The applicant proposes a mixed-use development with 38 single-family attached residential units and 181,950 square feet.
You haven't gotten to it yet to come on our screen?
What?
It's not coming on our screen yet.
It's on my screen. It's on the back screen, but...
But it is a census reminder, okay? 363 million. We want it. In Prince George's County, we want it. We need it. We need it.
Are we going to be able to buy site monitors that actually connect in better?
How about that? So we're going to take, we're going to take, you need a minute or two?
Yes, sir.
We're going to take a two-minute break while we address this.
Good morning, planning board. Hello?
You're on.
Before we begin, I wanted to take a moment to introduce Noel Smith, one of our newest transportation planners. She's been with us for six months, but this is her first time sitting down up front. She's a Prince George's County native and a graduate of Charles Herbert Flowers High School. She attended North Carolina ANT and earned a BSc in Civil Engineering. Outside of work, she's an assistant for the track and field at Herbert Flowers High School for the past five years. During that time, the girls team has won several championship titles and just recently competed in the county championships for indoor.
Great. Welcome.
Tell us your full name again?
Noel Smith.
Noel Smith. Well, wonderful. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
That was quite a lot of accomplishments, so thank you very much, and welcome. And while we're doing that, may I take this moment to congratulate and say farewell to Ifden Thompson. Ifden began working with the commission at age 16 as a seasonal employee at the Parks and Recreation Department. Years later, she returned to the commission as an intern in the commission's collegiate internship program during the summers of 2014 and 2015. Then, after completing her master's degree, Ifden joined the commission as a senior planner in the transportation section. During her time here, she worked on the development review applications, assisted in the update of the county's transportation model, and served on the steering committee for the Capital Trails Coalition, and represented the department on the proposed Hyperloop project. She is departing the Prince George's Planning Department, but she will continue her career with the commission as the multimodal transportation planner coordinator with the Montgomery County Department of Planning. So, Ifden?
Ifden's at a doctor's appointment this morning.
Oh, she is, okay. They told me she was here this morning. I'm sorry.
She'll be here later.
Okay. Well, we want to congratulate her. Okay, thank you in passing.
Madam Chair, may, Ifden is a big loss for us, and I'm starting to understand how the school system feels. You know, they get these brand-new teachers, they train them up, and then better, more opportunities come calling.
It's a big promotion for her.
Yes, it's a huge promotion for her, and we're just thrilled for her, sad for us.
Okay. So we are happy, and we wish her well in absentia. So when you see Ifden, please, please express your congratulations to her as well, and we congratulate and welcome you, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, we will have an Eagle-Aggy conversation after the session today.
Yes, yes.
I bet you would.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Earlby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. Once again, Jeremy Earlby for the Urban Design Section. This is item 7 for Hope Village Center CSP 18007. The applicant is proposing a mixed-use development with 38 single-family attached residential units and 181,950 square feet of commercial and institutional use. I would remind the board and the members of the audience that this is a conceptual site plan. It's the first step in the three-step process, which includes preliminary plan of subdivision and detailed site plan, which will come after this before any development. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the CSP. The property is located in central Prince George's County in Planning Area 82A and Council District 9. More specifically, the subject property is located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Maryland 223 and, also known as Woodyard Road and Marble Pike to the north. The subject property is Zone MXT, and is within the military insulation overlay zone. This aerial shows the 37-acre property, which is surrounded to the north by Marble Pike and future commercial zone property, to the east by Pepco Transmission Lines and Park Properties, and to the south by residential, and to the west by residential, including the newborn townhouse development and the commission's Windsor Park. The site contains floodplain, wetland streams, and other associated buffers, which comprise of the primary management area. Thermal streams are also located on-site in the center of the site, as seen here, but no other considered regulated environmental feature, and there are specimen trees on this scattered throughout the property. The master plan right-of-way's include Maryland 223, which is a master plan arterial, as well as a master plan collector C605 that bisects the property and connects William Bean Road and Marble Pike in the future. The bird's-eye view shows the undeveloped property with the neighboring single-family residential development and townhouse development and park to the west. This conceptual site plan shows the seven phases of development, including a street network with two connections on Maryland 223 and one on Marble Pike to the north. The CSP includes dedication of the master plan right-of-way C605, as I mentioned before, and open space in the center of the site and the southeast corner of the site. The illustrative site plan looks, or the applicant is looking to develop 4,650 square feet of gas station use at the corner of the development in the first phase. The applicant proposes two retail pad sites totaling 9,800 square feet just to the east of that, as well as the 38 single-family attached dwelling units, 210-bed assisted living facility on Maryland 223, and 150-room hotel to the south. Including, also included in the CSP is 45,000 square feet of institutional use, as shown in this plan as a church and community center. The landscape, this development is in the MXT zone and will be subject to the requirements of the Prince George's Landscape Manual at the time of DSP. The sign plan is shown for illustrative purposes only with the CSP, and signs will be approved as part of the DSP. A Type 1 tree conservation plan was submitted with the CSP. Currently, the TCP-1 shows all proposed improvements except stormwater management structures. At the time, at this time, minor changes are required to the TCP-1 and are conditioned within the staff report. The applicant will also be, one of those conditions includes the applicant revising the limits of disturbance for the initial phase of development as they plan to develop the corner site and put the rest of the CSP in an out parcel. This will ensure that the development, and for the record, this will ensure, I want to make sure that it's known that a Phase 1 archaeological report will be required to cover all phases of development, including... cover all phases of development, including future development, but more specifically that first phase and anything that may come after in the future. Urban design, staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve conceptual site plan CSP 18007 and Type 1 tree conservation plan TCP-1-015-2019. For Hope Village Center, this concludes staff's presentation, thank you. Additionally, the applicant has provided us with revised conditions, which staff is in agreement with.
This morning?
Yes.
Okay, are there questions of Mr. Earlby at this time?
I have just a question. Do we know what the proposed dates are for the proposed roads? Are there target dates?
That would be a question better answered by the applicant, but in terms of the construction of the road? We, at this time, we don't until we get to the subsequent phases of the development process, we'll have a better understanding of that.
Okay, are there any other questions of Mr. Earlby at this time? Okay, Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matthew Tedesco at the law firm, McMeHosey, here on behalf of the applicant VMD Upper Marlboro LLC. If I may go out of order just briefly, just to answer Commissioner Droll's question. So, that will be really ironed out at the time of preliminary plan, which will be the next step. We are pursuing the preliminary plan, it hasn't been officially filed or accepted yet, but those types of improvements will be mapped out and conditioned at the time of preliminary plan, okay? And Madam Chair, with your, with the board's indulgence, there are a number of residents here.
I see.
Yeah, you probably have a lengthy signup list. Members of the Antioch Baptist Church, who, the church actually is the owner of the property, and as I understand, there are, you know, a handful of folks that, although many have signed up, I think there are a handful that would like to be heard on this matter, and if it's okay with you, I would defer my presentation to allow them to speak, and then they can choose to stay or leave at their wish, but if it's okay with you, I'd just, I'd yield my time to them, just for them to have an opportunity to be heard first.
So, when you say yield your time, you're saying you're reducing the amount of your time?
I'm going to be really, really, really quick, so...
Okay, all right, so, yes. So, we're going to go ahead.
I didn't hear that, but I probably am glad I did.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, so this is a, I'm going to let the citizens know, this is a conceptual site plan, and we understand there are a number of people who are signed, where there's an awful lot of people, over two dozen signed up in support. So far, I have only six who are willing to speak, or who wish to speak on this matter, but I want to make sure that your testimony is germane to the subject matter, which is the conceptual site plan. We know that you, you have signed up in support. Well, not everybody signed up in support, actually. So, I do have one who signed up in opposition. So, Anthony Washington signed up first. He's on, Anthony Washington, and you signed up in opposition, and then followed by Tamara Whitaker. Is Tamara Whitaker here? And you wish to speak. And help, hold on again, sir. Helen Gilbert, and you wish to speak. And then, I'm just going to have you lined, lined up and ready to go. Teresa Jackson, and you wish to speak. Okay, and Effie Hillman, Hillian? Okay, Franklin Robinson, and you wish to speak? Okay, and then Joan Stevens, you wish to speak? Okay, now, I will give you, I'll let you know that we have, because we have several cases, you, it's your right to be able to come up and speak. If you wish to say, when I call your name, if you wish to say whether you're in support or in opposition, you can do that from your seat as well, and it'll be noted for the record. If you wish to associate yourself with any of the previous speakers, like if we get on down the list and you really feel that what you wanted to say has already been said, you can stand and associate yourself with the comments of the previous speaker, or you have the opportunity to come to the microphone yourself, so you have choices. Mr. Washington, please identify yourself for the record and give your address, and stay close to the microphone.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, board. My name is Anthony Washington, live at 13011 Minstock Lane in Upper Marlboro, Maryland, in the old Marlton community. First, in reference to the opposed, I don't oppose for the entire project, but this is my first time appearing, and based on the card, there were only two boxes to check. It was either approved or opposed, so there are portions of it that I opposed. An appreciation for the plan that was just laid out. I appreciate the opportunity for the community center, the assisted living, but my major concerns were in reference to the hotel and other businesses that I think may be better served going into the unfinished plans somewhere near the West Failure Project, which to this point has not even been completed. Three concerns for me were, why not focus on completion of the West Failure Project and hopefully get that going, since it's only two minutes away from this proposed site, which is going to cause a lot of other traffic issues. The other thing is, in some of the other community meetings we've already had, the response times for law enforcement, fire, to even include trash pickup, have been significantly impacted, just trying to keep up with what we currently have and the growth that's already happening before this project is even completed. The other portion is in reference to the traffic and some of the other things that will be significantly impacted by the location in and of itself. That's a really tough area for those who commute on a daily basis, cutting, coming out of southern Maryland, cutting through that zone. It's already pretty hectic, so I'm hoping that the infrastructure, which someone spoke to a moment ago, is being planned and well thought out, hopefully prior to, or if not in conjunction with the building of the properties, because it's going to be absolutely needed because it's already an issue just with the regular daily commutes. But those are my essential concerns.
Okay, so, obviously, you have a copy of the staff report, because you've gone, it sounds like you've gone through it, right? Or no? You don't have that?
This is just me being a citizen living in the area.
That was pretty good, no staff report, okay. So, can we make sure that he has a copy of the staff report, that you can go through it, and some of the issues that you have raised? There are stages of development, and this is a conceptual site plan, and there will be additional stages, and you have the ability to come and speak, depending on what happens with this one. But one of the trans, you raise some transportation conditions, and there will be, there are conditions in the staff report that the applicant will have to abide by if, in fact, this is approved. So, there are things, and then, did you have any meetings with, did you have any meetings? No?
Just some community meetings with other, other neighbors and folks in the community. We just got together and talked.
But you're part of an association?
I'm part of the homeowners association within Marlton, but also, there's just some neighborhood communities we gather and get together.
The homeowners association was sent a notice pursuant to the...
No, actually, there's a, there's a neighborhood app that we use in the neighborhood as a community, and we send out information of things that are up and coming. I saw it, and I came.
Okay, no, no, we're very happy that you came.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's your right, but I just wanted to, I'm saying this for future reference. By law, before an applicant files, thank you, before an applicant files the application itself, they have to send out a notice, an informational mailing, and then, so they have to, to the community, and then they have to send out, so that was done a good while ago, back in 2018, actually, and then there's an acceptance mailing. And when they send out these mailings to registered homeowners associations, then that's an opportunity for the homeowners association, because they put the contact information in the letter, and they, and so the homeowners associations then have the opportunity to request the applicant to come in and present the whole application to the association and to the neighborhood. So, if you, if that information is kept up to date, which sometimes it isn't, but we, you know, when there's a change in officers and whatnot, when we, when it's kept up to date, we send notices to the, whoever the registered person is in that association, and that's their opportunity to request a meeting, which the applicants will come to, to present an overview, so that you're not caught off guard as to what the plans are. So, I really say this to advise everyone, even those here today and those who are viewing, you know, to please make sure your association is registered, so that you have an overview presentation of what's being proposed, although I must say, you did extraordinarily well without that.
Okay.
So, we're going to get some of your questions addressed, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let me go back down my list. Okay, Tamara Whitaker?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. I am Tamara Whitaker. I live at 13619 Wood Ember Drive in Upper Marlboro, Maryland. I am a long-term resident of the county, graduate of Frederick Douglass High School in Upper Marlboro, and a product of higher education in the state as well. And I represent, and there are many of us that are going to speak, you said, two dozen of us that are here to support, we are members of Antioch Baptist Church of Upper Marlboro, and we are fully vested in this project, we are fully vested in the county. We believe that the project will offer much-needed services in an underserved area. Again, we're residents of this area, we are, have long-term residents of this area, so we are fully vested and fully care about the project. It is our joint desire to create, continue to create a space where we can have thriving families, thriving individuals in our thriving county. We are products of Prince George's County, we love Prince George's County, we want to see it thrive, and we want to be a part of that.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And helping to see it thrive means letting them all know they got to be counted in the census, but okay, okay. Thank you. Helen Gilbert?
Good morning, planning board and chair. My name is Helen Gilbert, and I am affiliated with Antioch Baptist Church, but I'm also a member of the community. I live directly off of Woodyard Road, and when I, when I got out of the military, I moved to Upper Marlboro, fell in love with Upper Marlboro, and I've witnessed the growth of Upper Marlboro. But we still have growing to do. There's still a lot more growing to do, and I work with the youth around in the county, and a lot of their issues is they don't have jobs that are close by. They have to go further out for, looking for places to work part-time while they're going to school. So, with the mixed-use facility, they would have, and once it's developed, they would have employment, they would stay off the street, not be bored, and not get into trouble. So, I know with growth, there comes, sometimes you have to put up with a little bit of nuisance to see the final product, because when I first moved here, Sootland Parkway was two lanes. Now, look at us now, if we had not had that expanded, Upper Marlboro would have not expanded. So, I'm fully invested in the Royal Farms and the mixed-use development. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, Ms. Gilbert. Going down the list, is it Teresa Jackson next?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
I'm Teresa Jackson, a member of the Antioch Baptist Church of Upper Marlboro. I've been a resident in Upper Marlboro for about 40 years, here in Prince George's County. I've participated in several District 9's initiative, from the former District 9 chair to the current one that we have now, so I've invested in, in those opportunities. I've also led the Holly, Holly, not Holly, Holloway Estates Citizens Group about 12, 15 years ago for the new school on Rosaryville. We dealt with the superintendent of schools, Dr. Metz, at that point, and had some very intimate meetings with the council for planning, and the community has immensely flourished from that school. There have been opportunities and living care positions that have come to play because of that school. So, we're very excited about growth in the area. The other thing that I wanted to say is that we, as a body of the, of the Church of Upper Marlboro, we are looking to do special things, as was laid out for this, for this site plan, and we're looking for your support in doing that, and the endeavor will provide much-needed services in an area that currently lacks services, and I respectfully ask the planning board to approve the conceptual site plan. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. Okay, so now, we're going, let's see, Franklin Robinson?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
My name is Franklin.
Can you raise the microphone just a little bit, although you have a good booming voice. Just raise it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Franklin Robinson. I resided 3612 EYRE, E-Y-R-E, Drive South in Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Been a resident in that household for over 40 years now, and the thing that interests me about this proposal that is before you is the idea of youth and jobs. Raised three children who are doing very well, and have resided in Prince George's County for a long time, but there wasn't anything for them to do. I remember when there was one traffic light on Route 301, but look at us now. But the thing that interests me about the youth, since I've retired, I drive Prince George's County school bus for about 15 years now, and at times, I pick up the youth to take them, take them to different work sites, such as 7-Eleven or wherever it may be. Now, by them working, it's not just a job aspect to the work, but it's the idea of they learn to be responsible young people, and so, as they grow up and they have different challenges and realizing that it takes certain things to do to be successful, but when they've had things that they were required to do, or they found themselves doing, such as working at an early age, and I believe this with this site, it would also develop jobs for needy people, for youth, and even older ones. So, I think this would be another opportunity to help develop and raise our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Okay. Joan Stevens?
Good morning. I'm Joan Stevens, and I reside in Bowie, Maryland, but my church is Antioch Baptist Church, and I've been a member there for over 20-some years. I've been in the county for the, I've been in Maryland for the last 40-some years, two of those years I spent in Washington, DC and Silver Spring, but the rest of those years, it's been in Prince George's County, and I'm very proud to be a member of Prince George's County. Also, I've worked with the Longleaf Community, and I stood before this board 20 years ago when we were opposing a development, another development in our area, so I understand what goes on, and, but I also want to say that our church, you know, we were led by the man of God, and we think it is something that God has destined us to do, is to provide for our youth and our seniors, and being a senior now, I'm really ready for a senior center. I would like to say that what we need to do is get this project moving and go on to do greater things in Prince George's County, because counties I see outside of us, in Rundle, Prince, other counties, Montgomery, they're doing things, we need to continue to do our thing. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I think that concluded the list of people who wish to speak. Is that accurate? No? Oh, did I have you sign up to speak, sir?
No, you had Effie Hillian sign up, that's my wife, it should be Lawrence Hillian.
Well, I have, I have Lawrence Hillian signed up, but not to speak. It just said you were in support, okay, but you could speak.
Madam Chair and board members, I'll be very quickly. It's already been said, but I did just want to add my story to, to this also. I'm retired military, and when we moved in the area, we always looked for, in the community, what's there, and we thought it was good schools there, so we had our children to go to, and just the surroundings was, was great, so we loved it, and we loved the home. But after we'd been there for a few years, well, not a few years, a few months, we noticed that there was not any convenience store or gas station closer than four and a half miles, and we say, whoa. So, I said, well, if we run out of gas, then we got to... So, I said, well, if we run out of gas, then we got to go four miles to get it. Well, so for me, this is convenience. And also, I'm also a member of the Antioch Baptist Church, I didn't say that. But it's convenience, and to have, to be able to go to a gas store to get anything, gas and plus emergency items. So, that's very important, so I'm so happy. So, I support, we support the conceptual site plan, and we ask that you would pass it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And, oh, excuse me, can you just please state your name? And I know you said it was Lawrence Hillian, and your address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, Lawrence Hillian. I live at fifty-twenty-three Asper Drive, Upper Marlboro, Maryland.
Okay, thank you so very much. Now, does that conclude this, the list of people who wish to speak at this hearing? Okay, Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your indulgence, allowing the citizen to speak first. I think I'd be remiss if I too didn't say that I am also a product of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, and grew up in Marlton, went to Madison Elementary School and James Madison Middle School. Would have gone to Douglas. Yeah, I, I need to tell Tamara, I would have gone to Douglas, but my mother and father sent my twin brother and I to DeMatha instead, primarily because my mom grew up in Heinzville and went to Seton, so. But would have gone to Douglas, but Tamara reminds me that when she was a senior at Douglas, my mom was the, the school investigator for Douglas High School at the time. So, she remembers me when I was probably at their homecoming at four or five, or I guess ten years old and running around. But I want to thank you again for allowing the, the residents to speak, and I do want to respond to Mr. Washington's comments. The Community Association of Marlton is on the list, so we did send an informational mailing and an acceptance mailing to them. The address that's registered with Park and Planning is twelve hundred, excuse me, twelve thousand Kingfield Court. I'm happy to get with Mr. Washington, make sure he has my card. If that needs to be updated, I'll show him where that, it may not be immediately today because I've got a couple of other cases on the agenda, but...
We can take a break now.
But anyway, with that being said, happy to share information with Mr. Washington, make sure the information is correct, so he's getting the proper notifications, and also meet with him as needed with, to explain the process, given that this is a conceptual site plan, preliminary plan, as well as a future detailed site plan. With that, Madam, Madam Chair, we are fully in agreement with the staff's recommendations. We incorporate and adopt our justification statement in this matter. I want to thank staff. Also, be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Jeff Ludwig from N.A. Michaels Companies. He is the representative of the Antioch Baptist Church, and so I want to thank him for his efforts in this, in this particular case, as well as all the residents who came out today, although not everyone spoke. I thank you for your time and attention in this case, and we greatly appreciate it. With that, Madam Chair, I do have requested revisions to conditions that we have worked with your staff, and I want to thank Mr. Hurlbut, as well as Transportation Planning Staff and Urban Design Staff with, working with us on these conditions. And I'm happy to report that we are in full agreement, although I know you will ask Mr. Hurlbut that same question, but we are in full agreement. So, if I can have that marked as applicant's exhibit one.
Okay, the, the, the conditions?
The revised conditions, yes, ma'am.
I thought you weren't in full agreement.
With the revised conditions.
With his revised.
Revised, so the revised, so the revised, but we'll leave that for, that's among us, not for you all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, just a little piece of housekeeping. We did email this to the applications section. I have another business entity, state ethics affidavit. I just want to make sure that it's in the record. We're learning that we can't submit enough of these for the district council's review. So, we have one in the, the one we submitted is the parent entity of the actual applicant entity, but I want to put one into your file that's inclusive of the sole purpose entity, that's the applicant in this case.
Okay, so that's accept your proposed revised conditions into the record as applicant's exhibit number one. And the affidavit, the more complete affidavit will be accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number two.
Thank you. So, I'm prepared to go through each of the revisions as needed. I will follow your lead on that.
Let's, let's go. Okay, so, so one A is self-explanatory for, for any residential development. Can we go to one F-ten?
Yeah, one F-ten. So, the genesis of a lot of these revisions is that we intend to phase, this, this is going to be a phased project. The commercial, phase one, and, and subsequently behind that would be phase two. And the rest of the phases, which is the residual piece of the property to, to the right of the screen, will be in future phases. And what we intend to do is provide, file a preliminary plan for phase one initially, and then the rest of the phases will be reflected as outlots or outparcels, whatever the subdivision section asks or requires. So, a lot of these conditions just get to memorializing that and providing the, what's going to be needed with each of the, the preliminary plan phasing and future DSP phasing. I think that's the easiest way for me to summarize it.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we're good.
All right. So, that really covers the changes to one and two, conditions one and two.
Within the right, okay, so two.
So, E, E is just, so there's a substantial amount, and you can actually see it on the bottom part of your screen, there's a substantial amount of right-of-way already dedicated State Highway Administration. And the intent, I believe, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, I will be corrected, but the intent is to have that sidewalk eight-foot trail connection kind of getting to that intersection, which we envision will probably require at least some of it to be on S.H.A. property. So, I don't know that for certain, but we wanted the flexibility if that is what ends up having, having to happen.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
G is again, just, again, another clarifying language on the condition with respect to the future pedestrian crosswalks at the intersection of Woodyard Road and that, or Collector Road.
You took out the word "safe" because what?
Well, you know, I knew I was going to get asked that. I was trying to think, what's the right answer? I mean, I don't, I think everything that S.H.A. makes us do is safe, right? So, it's kind of redundant, in my opinion.
Don't even think about it, Mr. Maktari. Okay. So, it's funny that you should be talking about, you know, some transportation and whatnot, too. And, and then we have retiree Mr. Maktari walk in the room, who was probably...
Just, just my luck.
We loved, but he might have been the bane of many private sector transportation folks. Yes, all right, all right, good to see you, Mr. Maktari. Okay. Please, please proceed.
It wasn't to imply it would be anything other than safe, it's just I don't think it's needed to be, you said. And then four, four carries.
You're still glossing over that. Okay.
No, what's wrong with keeping safe?
Yeah.
I don't get... Well, I mean, if S.H.A. permits it, then it's safe, right? So, is there going to be a debate on what, whether it's safer? And I'm trying to avoid future subjective review of something when the agency is permitting it.
Okay, what's going?
Subjectivity sometimes behind the scenes gets a little distracting and challenging, not only for us, but staff too. So, we're just trying to simplify things if we can. And four, four is just the, it's the same call-out that we have in three with respect to at the time of preliminary plan. As you all know, in the MXT zone, this property was, I neglected to say, this property was rezoned comprehensively with the Subregion Six Master Plan and SMA. And when that occurs, we're required to do a traffic impact analysis at the time of CSP. But that doesn't foreclose the requirement to have to do a traffic impact analysis at the time of subdivision as well. And there's language in the zoning ordinance in twenty-seven-five-four-six that says that your conditions of transportation approvals aren't, can be modified at the time of preliminary plan. So, that language is just a qualifier similar to condition three.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I've got.
Okay. So, yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Historic preservation, that there was a statement that there may be some references to some activity during the Civil War, so we're looking forward to getting that report.
Yeah, so what, absolutely, and so what we've done in condition two A, and it kind of goes back towards some of the other revisions in condition two, is at the time of the preliminary plan, the preliminary plan that's proposing development, in this case would be phase one, will be required to do a phase one. And as subsequent development is proposed with a future preliminary plan for those areas, i.e. the townhouses, the sanctuary, the assisted living, they'll be required to a phase one prior to their preliminary plan. So, we will be covered with respect to making sure phase ones are done. We didn't want to have the burden of doing a phase one for the entire site, when right now, phase one is just, just, you know, two acres, three acres.
You're going to stage the phase one.
Yes, through, through, through preliminary plans, yes.
Yeah, just an indication of interest, that's it.
Yep, no, we hear you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I believe that we adopt the findings of staff as well as the recommendations of staff as further modified by applicant exhibit number one and approve TCP one, I'm sorry, CSP one-eight-zero-zero-seven, along with the associated tree conservation plan, TCP dash one, dash fifteen, dash twenty F.
Second, did we get all the revised conditions?
Yes, applicant exhibit one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Two things. Mr. Tedesco, first, a little over a week ago, I guess it was, I, we announced the passing of Morgan Wooten.
Yes.
Who was a longtime basketball coach at DeMatha, who actually taught...
History.
Baseball, others, he taught other sports there and world history. And I wanted to express our, I don't know if you were here that day or not.
I wasn't, but thank you for that. If I may, two, two minutes? Yeah, I was obviously, he was a teacher and a basketball coach when I was at DeMatha in the nineties, and my best Morgan Wooten, so everyone says how, what a wonderful person he was, and he treated everyone like you were the most important person, even if you didn't play basketball. I happened to play baseball, and we, you know, the basketball team back in the early nineties, there wasn't a lot of swag like there is now, these, these schools, everyone gets everything. We wanted turf shoes and cleats, and we were a Reebok school at the time, I think we're an Under Armour school now, and everyone was like, well, how do we, you know, the basketball team gets bags, and how do we get, we just want cleats. So, I went to Morgan's office, and myself and another captain of the team, and we explained, he says, go get everyone shoe size and give it back, and let me, and I'll see what I can do. Within two weeks, we had our turf shoes and cleats, and it's just the type of, I mean, that's just a small little thing. I mean, I wasn't nobody to him. He didn't know me from Adam, really, because he had stopped teaching by that point, and I wasn't on his basketball team. But he helped everyone, and he was a very gracious person.
He was a wonderful, wonderful guy.
And a former member of this board.
Thank you, yeah. So, I said that, because he was, I mentioned, he was on this board, and at that time, while you were in high school, some of us were here working. I was legal counsel to the board, and I used to sit next to him, and we developed a wonderful relationship.
Yeah.
So, he was just a wonderful guy. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Okay, and it's, and part two is, we're going to take a ten-minute recess and come back, because the rest of the cases are yours, so that you can speak to Mr. Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Hello? Okay, so I'm going to go for, the planning board's back in session. Mr. Tedesco, you're out there. You know what? I'm going to go ahead and go take item six, and then, and then you were bringing up the rear. Okay.
Yeah. He's supposed to be in the seat, is he going to thank everybody?
Okay, okay. Mr. Cosby, can you bring me the sign-ups for number six?
It said we have two people in opposition.
Okay, so, let me make sure I'm clear here. I want to make sure that everybody, I have two people signed up in, in opposition to item six, and that, so, I'm not sure that there's a mistake or not. Brandy Wine Corner, Preliminary Plan of Subdivision four dash one-eight-zero-two-six. Brandy Wine Corner. Patrice Brooks and Carlos Braxton, you're in this case. And you're in this cap matter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and then, and then Patrice Brooks, too?
Yes.
And you're in this, too? Okay, just want to make sure I'm clear. Okay, thank you. Do we have the attorney? All right, I'm real, I'm real confused here.
Are you going to call Tom Page?
Yes, that's what I was trying to do, I think.
I think his will be correct.
Yeah, okay, that's, I'm, I'm mixed up on the numbers here.
You mean five?
Oh, yeah, five. Okay, thank you. That's what I'm confused about, okay. Sorry, Ms. Haller, I got a little mixed up up here. So, we're going to go after five, six, eight, and three B.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I am Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section. Item five is a DSP for the construction of a contractor's office and outdoor storage The site is located in central Prince George's County in Planning Area seventy-five B in Council District Seven. The property is in the northwest quadrant of its intersection with water, of Walker Mill Road and Silver Hill Road. The property is in the I-1 Zone and bounded by properties in the I-1 Zone. This area shows the vacant site now lines the property in red. The site gently slopes to the north and east, and the proposed improvements will not have any impacts on the environmental features located near the site. The master plan right-of-way adjacent to the site includes the collector of Walker Mill Road, shown here in green, south of the site. The slide shows the bird's-eye view of the existing undeveloped property. The site plan shows the proposed contractor's office located here, and the storage yard on the property, which is proposed to the south and north of the site. And the stormwater management facilities are located on the northern and eastern portions of the property. The DSP was required by the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision four dash zero-one-zero-five-six to ensure that the property is developed similar to the other properties in the area, and the required landscaping and screening is provided along Walker Mill Road, which is located in this, on this part of the slide. Staff notes that this area is adequately screened and includes the required landscape buffer and fence. The architectural elevations for the contractor's office building show the character of the proposed building, and staff recommends additional architectural treatments as included in Condition one C, which requires the proposed office to be painted a neutral color and requires a trailer skirt around the entire base to screen the wheels and undercarriage of the structure. The applicant has agreed to these conditions and will, will be proposing revised architectural treatments at the time of certification. The DSP meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, previous approvals, the twenty-ten Prince George's County Landscape Manual, the woodland and wildlife habitat and tree canopy coverage ordinances, and the Urban Design Section recommends the Planning Board adopt the findings of this report and approve DSP eighteen oh four-nine and TCP two zero-three-nine twenty nineteen. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr.? Mr. Bishop at this time. Mr. Haller?
Good morning. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thomas Haller, I'm an attorney with offices in Largo, and I'm here today representing the owners of the property, which is Dema LLC. And I have two representatives of the ownership here, as well as our engineer, Mr. Milton Perez. And the owners of the property also own a construction company called Den United. It's currently based in Washington, D.C. They have about twenty employees, but ninety-five percent of their employees live in Prince George's County. So, they're looking to relocate their business to Prince George's County, and they've acquired this property. As staff indicated, the requirement for a detailed site plan, which is normally not required in the I-1 Zone, was a condition of a subdivision that was approved back in two thousand and one. It actually dates back to language that was put in the nineteen eighty-five... It actually dates back to language that was put in the 1985 sectional map amendment for Sutland Districtites. In that sectional map amendment, there was about 200 acres of land zoned industrial and there was language placed in the plan recommending a detailed site plan for that area when it was developed. And so the, when the property was subdivided, this property was part of a 16-acre subdivision, that condition was carried forward. And, and the condition pretty much is for, for this property relates mostly to making sure that it's adequately screened from view from Walker Mill Road. And not only are we providing site tight fencing and extensive landscaping and the recommendations actually recommend evergreen trees as landscaping, there's also because of the construction of a stormwater management pond on the right side or the east side of the property line, the county right-of-way actually approaches further into the, into the property and is also vegetated. So there's plenty of screening for the property and so we've addressed all of the concerns that were set forth in the master plan. We concur with staff's findings, recommendations and we have no revisions to conditions and be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions to Mr. Haller?
Just a question, not that it was necessary, but I noticed that we did not get any comments from the municipality. Is it in the municipality of Kappa Heights property?
No, it's not.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
They're close by, but not, not even abiding the property, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Haller.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else who wished to speak on this matter? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve DS, adopt the findings of fact as well as the recommendations and approve DSP 18049, 18049 as well as TCP 2-039-2019.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to note, you mentioned earlier the passing of Mr. John Delaney.
I was just getting ready to say condolences again to you.
And as many of you know, we worked, Ed and I worked at Lenox and Barker 30 years ago now, that's a long time. But John Delaney was a prince of a man. He was one of the most knowledgeable attorneys and one of the most generous attorneys with his time that I've ever been associated with. Many of you know, he wrote the book, Maryland Land Use Decisions and the man had an encyclopedic knowledge of land use cases, but he also had a card file on his desk, every case briefed out, every land use case.
Wow.
If you ever wanted to know, if you said, "John, is there a case that deals with?" Say, "Oh, I think there was a case in 1943," and he'd go through his little rolodex and he would, he could pick a case out on any subject matter related to land use. The man was unbelievable.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
I wanted to express my condolences to you and to Mr. Gibbs because I know, I remember all too well, you worked with him.
Absolutely.
You were part of Lenox and Barker.
Thank you for recognizing.
So my condolences, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Tedesco, were you able to have that conversation?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Diaz Campbell.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number six on the agenda is the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision for Brandywine Corner, 4-18026. The subject project proposes two parcels for a total of 18,946 square feet of commercial development. Of this total, 4,946 square feet were approved under previous detailed site plan, DSP 1-15012, which at the time of its approval did not require an associated PPS. As a matter of housekeeping, staff has received one item of additional backup. This is a memo from the Planning Department's Special Projects Section which provides an updated analysis for staff's original memorandum regarding adequate public facilities. This memo demonstrates that police facilities to serve the subject property are adequate and it does not change the finding of adequacy in the technical staff report. This item was provided before noon on Wednesday and is included in the additional backup. The site is located in the southern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 85A and Council District Nine. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of Branch Avenue or Maryland Five at the southwest quadrant of its intersection with Moore's Road. The subject site is located in the Commercial Miscellaneous or CM Zone. To the west of the site are single-family detached dwellings and the Rural Residential or RR Zone. To the east are Maryland Five and RR Zone properties beyond. To the south is an unimproved right-of-way, Janie Lane, with vacant RR Zone property beyond. To the north is Moore's Road with CM Zone properties beyond. The aerial photograph shows construction activity associated with DSP-15012 on the northern part of the site. Our Royal Farms is under construction at this location. The photograph also shows that the southern part of the site is still wooded. This wooded area is supposed to be cleared in order to make way for 14,000 square feet of new development associated with the PPS. This photo shows another view of the site from a bird's eye view. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally flat but slopes to the south. The master plan right-of-way map shows Maryland Five, which is classified as a freeway next to this site under the master plan of transportation. The map also shows Brandywine Road, which is classified as collector, and Savannah Drive, which is classified as an arterial. There is no right-of-way dedication proposed or required with this application. The critical intersections determined to be impacted by the development are shown by the red bull's eyes on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. Given the proposed development, it is found that the critical intersections would continue to operate at adequate levels of service except for the intersection of Maryland Five and Moore's Road. Staff recommends a monetary contribution to the Brandywine Road Club in order to mitigate The site is subject to provide off-site bicycle and pedestrian improvements. To meet these requirements, the applicant is proposing share the road with a bike signage assemblies along Moore's Road and Brandywine Road. The approximate proposed locations of the signs are shown on this slide. Staff finds that the provision of new signage along these two roads is sufficient to meet BPIS requirements for adequacy. The preliminary plan shows two parcels are proposed, outlined in red. Parcel Two is on the right side of the slide while Parcel One is on the left. Parcel Two is the site of the approved Royal Farms. Parcel One is the site of 14,000 square feet of additional proposed development. Accurate public facilities, including water, sewer, fire, rescue and police facilities, are available to serve both parcels. The abutting public right-of-way for Moore's Road, Maryland Five and Janie Lane are in dark blue. A proposed access easement which would allow Parcel One to access Moore's Road is shown in light blue. Staff is recommending the planning board approve this access easement in accordance with Section 24-128b9 of the subdivision regulations because allowing Parcel One to take access directly from Maryland Five or Janie Lane would create a dangerous traffic situation. The plan reflects denial of access from these two roads for Parcel One. A proposed alternate location for the public utility easement along Maryland Five is shown in yellow. The applicant has requested a variation from Section 24-122A of the subdivision regulations to allow this alternate placement. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth in Finding 11 of the technical staff report. Staff would note that when DSP-15012 was approved for the Royal Farms, the DSP covered the entire site. The existing DSP must be revised to reflect the boundaries of the new Parcel Two. A separate DSP will be required for new development on Parcel One. This application is subject to the woodland conservation ordinance and a Type 1 tree conservation plan has been filed with the application. This TCP One shows the subject parcels outlined in red. The abutting public sheets internal access easement are shaded in blue and the 1.84 acres of woodland to be cleared are shown in green. To meet woodland conservation requirements, 1.77 acres of off-site woodland conservation will be required, will be provided. Staff has determined that there are no stressed trees located on site. In conclusion, the subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision 4-18026, Brandywine Corner, and variation to Section 24-122A, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. The applicant has also communicated proposed revisions to conditions of approval. Staff concurs with the proposed revisions and this concludes staff's presentation.
Can we go back to Slide 10? Okay, so, I just want to, I need for you to repeat some things to make sure I understood it correctly. So you're saying that you're proposing because of the danger to, of access to Route Five, direct access, is that what you said? That you're proposing that access via that easement?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
And that's the one that's the dotted, well, not the dotted, but the hash marks?
Yeah, the, the hash marked light blue area is the proposed access easement.
For us older people, those are stripes.
Stripe? I'm just saying.
Okay.
Stripes.
Okay, that was, are there any other questions?
I got it. With regards, is the, for the bike, they're, they're just going to put up signs?
That's correct. The, the cost cap for this, for this site is too low to provide other facilities. The.
What about striping on the road?
I couldn't, I couldn't speak to how much that might cost. Do we have, Brian, would you like to speak to that issue?
Good morning, Brian Barnett Woods for the Transportation Planning Section. I don't have specific numbers for striping, but it's more expensive than one would think, so it'll probably exceed the cost gap. One of the other challenges is when striping the roadway, the limitation is how long each thing could be, so if we could only do a very short amount, it would have very low impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions at this time? Mr. Tedesco.
Hello again. Good almost afternoon. Matthew Tedesco with the law firm, Macanahosey, here on behalf of the, excuse me, I'm sorry, applicant and owner, Brandywine Corner LLC. I want to thank Mr. Diaz Campbell for his presentation, his review of this matter, also Ms. Connor and Mr. Barnett Woods's review of this case. I do, although I concur with Mr. Diaz Campbell's presentation, I just had one little point of clarification, I think, that was mentioned. There's language in the staff report that talks about revising the existing DSP to only include what would be Parcel Two if the subdivision is approved, which is currently the Royal Farms site, which is nearing completion of construction and that the DSP would be revised to remove that DSP from new Parcel One. And I think Mr. Diaz Campbell said, and then the new DSP would be required for Parcel One. I just want to clarify, yes, if whatever use is subsequently proposed requires a need for a DSP in the CM Zone. There are uses in the CM Zone that don't require DSP. So if the DSP is revised to not include a Parcel One, then the trigger of the DSP is only based upon the use. I just wanted that clarified. We don't know what the use is and I'm saying that for consideration of members of the audience who I, I know are here to speak. Mr. Brooks is the resident who lives adjacent to this property, so I just wanted to get out in front of it, we do not have a proposed use currently for the Parcel One that is the creation of this subdivision to split the property into two. With that, Madam Chair, we fully agree with staff's recommendations. We do have revised findings that we have worked very closely with staff on and have come to an agreement on and with that, we're happy to submit on the record and present that as an exhibit.
Revised findings or conditions?
I'm sorry, revised conditions.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Revised conditions that will be taken care of as findings as needed with the resolution.
Okay. Okay. Does the board have questions of Mr. Tedesco at this time? Let's get, let the, get the revised conditions, proposed revised conditions into the record.
And I will just apologize ahead of time. I've got two separate handouts, but collectively they're one. We had a modification to a condition earlier this morning and we just, I didn't have time to go back and marry it all together, so I think it'll make sense when you see it, but you've got two, but it's really to be one. So take one of each. Does that make sense?
I didn't follow that.
Sorry.
Well, no, when we see it.
Pass it out and then I'll explain it, I'm sorry. Oh, Michael, can I have one of them?
So we have citizens in opposition. Would you like, let them have a copy too?
I, I think we have 10, so there should be enough to share.
Okay.
If I misspeaking now on my third case, I'm doomed to fail on my fourth, so bear with That was a joke to my client in the back of the room. I said if I misspeaking on my third case, I'm doomed to fail on my fourth, but that was a joke for my client in the, in the back of the room. Probably not laughing.
Okay. I see. So we're going to accept this into the record as applicants, the proposed revised conditions as applicants, Exhibit Number One.
Yes.
I'm just going to do it A and B, just to make it really clear. Okay.
So yeah, the B is just new five.
Right. Just in case anything, I don't want anything to get separated, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Well, actually, it could be if we just stapled it together, I guess that's fine. It could be applicants exhibit number one. And it's accepted as identified, okay?
Thank you.
So, can we go through that? So, new condition five, you propose that it reads. Mr. Tedesco?
Yes, so new condition five was been worked through with staff quite extensively. It seeks, so the, the trigger for the BPIS is the subdivision of Parcel One because Parcel Two is already entitled and vested with the detailed site plan and the construction. So new Parcel One is what's triggering the BPIS, so we've clarified, instead of subject property, it's Parcel One, again, just a clarification. The cap for the BPIS, I think, is 4,000 and some change. We have, we have shown up to eight signs on our BPIS exhibit, which would total $3,000, so we've got up to 3,000. And then the, the deletions are to strike the number of signs and just.
So up to 33?
Up to 33, $3,360, yes.
Okay, got it.
And then I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory, but.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. It's a lot of signs in a small area, so we just wanted to have the ability to make sure we're meeting adequately by having signs and that there's a trigger that allows for the, the agency to determine what that is, but there absolutely has to be signage.
Okay, so Item 6B is, switch approval to review.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and then 10, and you're okay with all these conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Item 10 is.
So 10, again, another clarification for the future DSP or approval of a building permit for Parcel One, and that went to the clarification I made earlier with respect to comments that were made. And then 10, new 10A is the connection, there was a little bit of ambiguity, at least on my part, on the original language of 10A, so we worked with staff to come up with revised language that I think is much clearer on what staff is looking for.
Okay.
Which we agree with. So actually, two, 10A is staff's language, I've just adopted it as my own to make myself look smart.
Okay. Are there questions at this point? Yes, Commissioner Dorn.
Yeah, I'm just going to pick on you since you.
Sure.
In the prior case, we're talking about subjectivity and the word safe, so I can also kind of reverse that around with number five. How do we know you're only going to do one sign versus all the way up to that? Because in the prior condition, I mean, I understand like not wanting to place a, a number of signs in there in the actual condition itself in the total, but you could get away with no signs.
No.
Or one sign with how it's written, right?
No, I can't get away with, I can't get away with no signs. I have to do signage and I have to do up to $3,000 worth of signs. The, the concern and the issue that we had with how the language is originally drafted is that DPW and T is the. is that DPW and T, as the, and DPIS, the agencies that are going to be installing these signs and putting them up, they are obligated under the manual for uniform traffic control devices, which states, "The use of warning signs shall be based on engineering study or engineering judgment. The use of warning signs should be kept to a minimum as necessary, as the unnecessary use of warning signs tends to breed disrespect for all signs." So what I wanted, what I'm trying to capture here is, we have to do signs, that's the adequacy of BPIS, that signage is required, but I need to have the ability to have DPW and DPW and T determine, should it be all four like we proposed, which, so be it, or should it be two, three, really giving them the ability to make that engineering judgment call, and to make sure that we're not putting so many out there that it's so duplicative that it doesn't do what we're trying to do, which is provide safety for BPIS.
Yes, I totally understand the semantics of it, but when, when it says up to 3360, like, you could spend $200 or one time, whatever it might cost.
I mean, I'll be honest...
Have to make sure we, we actually get to that amount that would be adequate.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I don't want to go back on what we've agreed to, so let me just say, I'm in full agreement with this language. Alternatively, I would also be in agreement if we struck the monetary amount and said up to four signs. I, I just need the flexibility in case DPW and T comes back and says, "Yeah, we understand we have to put signs up here based upon your requirement under inadequacy finding, so we have to do signs, but we're not doing four, we're doing two, or we're doing three." And I don't want to be in conflict with your approval of this preliminary plan, if I'm, if I'm mandated to do four and they tell me two, I'm theoretically, or not theoretically, actually in violation of the, of the adequacy finding. So I'm just trying to capture that so that I'm, so that we're not in violation of this approval. So, like I said, I'm in agreement with five, as, as proffered, as suggested by staff, and we worked out that language up to 33, because then I think, and I don't want to speak for staff, they can do it, but I think the notion was, that is what's going to set the standard for how many signs, and it's not going to be more, but it could be less. If you took out the money and said up to four, but no less than one, I mean, I, I'm fine with that too. I mean, we recognize we have to do signage, that's, that's the adequacy, BPIS adequacy finding that you all are making.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our staff are comfortable with the amount on, on that.
Why don't you put in the number?
Okay.
And put in the number, and then put unless otherwise decided by DPIS.
Okay, why don't we do this? We have some people signed up to speak, take a moment, think of the language, I have our team, maybe Mr. Barnett Woods and Legal, and you can, you know, just clarify it a little bit for us, okay?
What about the second?
Okay, and while we hear from the other people who've signed up to speak. Okay. Well, I, I changed it and made it all part of one, I stapled it together. Okay, okay. Okay, so now I have Carlos Braxton.
We have the Murphy being in possession.
Okay, so let the record reflect, Mr. Braxton was here, signed up in opposition. Patrice Brooks, followed by Carleen Powell.
Good afternoon, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. My name is Patrice Brooks, I'm a resident of Moore's Road, I'm on the east side of Moore's Road. I've been a resident...
Can you show, can you show us, Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Could you clarify, ma'am, I'm looking at the, the north...
I'm on the east side of Moore's, uh, on Branch Avenue, I'm sorry, I'm on the east side of Branch.
Oh, okay.
So on that side, yes. Just across from where the Royal Farms is going to be.
Okay, thank you.
I have been a resident of Brandywine my entire life. My parents, matter of fact, my uncle who's sitting back there, my father were born not too far from where they currently live now. So we have invested 60-plus years in this area, and we've seen, you know, it go through a lot of changes. What worries me, first of all, and I know that this hearing isn't about the Royal Farms being built, but I just want to address part of that to get to my other piece, but part of our concern is the safety at our intersection.
The transportation safety, okay.
Transportation, the fact that this facility is now going to be a 24-hour facility in our backyard, basically. My uncle just, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, had his shed broken into, and they cleared him out.
Okay, so that's not the trans, okay, so that's different?
No, no, I'm just going on the safety, just talking in general. Transportation-wise, that intersection is not safe at all. We've been working...
The intersection of Branch?
Of Moore's and Branch Avenue, yes, ma'am. We have been working with the state on trying to get some improvement to Moore's and Branch and Earnshaw and Branch. Currently, at this time, the state is telling us that they don't have an adequate plan to deal with the issues at Moore's and Branch. They are suggesting putting a signal, censored signal, at Earnshaw and Branch. Now, the problem that we have is, this particular location that they're putting in, as they spoke of earlier, there is one way in, one way out. In order for anybody to be able to come to, which was already approved, the Royal Farms, they would have to come on and off of Moore's Road. There is never a good point of traffic on Branch Avenue. I've seen so many people lose their lives. They talk about putting these bike signs up everywhere. First of all, Moore's Road doesn't have a shoulder, so there is nowhere for the bikers to really ride, and same thing for Brandywine Road, there's not really a shoulder, there's barely enough room for each car in each lane. When Mr. Lamb lost his life not too long ago at Branch and Moore's Road, I witnessed that coming home, and there was the flashing lights there. So for me, your signage, the signage that they're putting up doesn't mean anything. We have an issue with infrastructure there, we have an issue with resident safety there. We have been trying for years to get somebody to deal with this. I have a 18, 19-year-old son, when he's home from school and he leaves my house, I watch him out my front door to make sure he can cross the intersection safely. So now, we're allowing businesses, which are going to draw more people there, who don't have an understanding of the life loss at that intersection, don't have an understanding of how that traffic pattern works that is going to cause more accidents. I heard Mr. Diaz talk about the bulletin that was put out about the policing adequacy. The bulletin that I have was dated November 12th of 2019, and in that bulletin dated November 12th of 2019, it basically states that, I'm sorry, November 25th, that as currently the first nine months of 2019 data shows that Police District Five and Seven have priority emergency times that exceeds the 10-minute emergency benchmark in every month, eight months in District Five, five months in District Seven have exceeded 10-minute benchmark by more than 20%. It also states that if the current condition continues through the end of calendar 2019, the emergency response time will result in a 12-month rolling average that exceeded 10-minute benchmark time. This will result in a finding that development in these police districts will not meet policing adequacy standards. The planning department would like to notify the development community, as this will impact the review of preliminary plans of subdivision applications for residential development within District Four and District Seven. So with that being said, for us, we've seen an increase in traffic fatalities at that intersection and at Earnshaw Drive, we've seen non-fatal accidents, it's like every other week, there's an accident at that intersection. I've begun taking pictures or even video when I come out of my intersection to show how unsafe it is. So I am totally opposed to this, I mean, I, I agree, like the, the other party was saying that you want development, but we want development that's going to benefit our community, not development that's going to benefit the other party, and this development is doing nothing to benefit us. My uncle spent years building a quiet enjoyment in his property, to now that's gone away, because Royal Farms has been put up, and now they're asking the subdivision to put more up. We don't want that. They are not do, matter of fact, when we went to the, they had the coffee club meeting at the Conny South Hotel in December with the state, the state kind of didn't even realize that all of this was happening, they were dumbfounded when we said everything that was going on. And I feel like everything that the state is doing to try to improve Branch Avenue is going to go just in the opposite direction in that corridor right there, where we're putting all of this development in that one spot. They are talking about closing off Moore's Road to make it safe, where you can't cross over between Branch and Moore's, but then on the east side, where we live, we're shut in. So now all we have a choice to do is go north, and then turn around to come back down south if that's what needs to happen. But something has got to happen to fix that, and I'm just, I don't think adding a business there is going to help, or even sub, personally, I don't think the Royal Farms was a great idea, but there's nothing we can do about that at this point. So to further add salt to the wound to approve them, to add more commercial property there is detrimental to us that have been there, again, for 50-plus years on this street. So that's the point I wanted to make up about the infrastructure and the signing and the policing authority and just the quiet enjoyment. We, as the residents, said if this was a business, you know, that wasn't a 24-hour that invited, my grandmother used to tell me when I was young, and I didn't understand until I became a parent, that nothing good happens between midnight and 5:00 a.m., and I believe her. And for me, having something in our community that invites people at that time of the hour isn't going to help our community, and especially when our police, you know, they said that I think we're getting three recruits out of the academy, and I don't think any of them are coming to our area, because there are other areas in our county that need it more. So, you know, we want to know is what their, Brandywine Corner wanting to do more important than the, the wants and needs and the safety of the residents in that area.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're, we're going to hear the concerns, and of course, we have two other speakers, and if you want to associate yourself with, with the concerns expressed by Ms. Brooks, you can, or if you want to come forward and, and present as well, you can, you are certainly able to do so. We're going to have Mr. Tedesco respond to some of the transportation issues, as well as our own transportation experts, looks like it's Mr. Burton right now, or, or Ms. Thompson on her way out. Okay, come on down.
Good afternoon.
Mrs. Powell, please identify yourself for the record.
All right. Good afternoon, my name is Carleen Moore Powell, I am a resident of Moore's Road, east side, I have property on the west side, and I am as well affected about, with all the development. I'm not against development, but it's the process and how, and what's being developed. So I oppose to future development at the Brandywine Corner for the following reasons. The proposed subdividing, subdividing of the property pays the way for increased commercial activity at this intersection without the benefit of a traffic study. This proposition seems to favor economic development at the expense of public safety and our ability in what is primary zone as a low-temperature residential area. It intuitively will generate trips and slowdowns on Branch Avenue, which is a primary arterial road, and undermines the purpose behind the recent removal of signalization of reconfiguration of the intersection of Brandywine Road, Acapulco, and Branch Avenue. The property owners and residents along Moore's Road are not in favor of this development and are not happy, and are not happy with the idea that there will now be tanked trucks coming into the neighborhood to load and unload fuel, and other motor carriers delivering other types of freight, especially if this means that each, especially if this means that such vehicles would be crossing lanes of traffic to make their delivery. What other jurisdictions have done, including Washington DC, is to ensure that economic development is also materially improves the community that will host this economic activity. If there should be such economic development at this intersection, the developers should be obligated to also ensure that, one, people have safe and easy access in and out of Moore's Road, two, that the overall flow of traffic is maintained, and that street, street scape design, including signalization, conduces to less chaos and an improved aesthetic. Without these considerations, the residents of Moore's Road recommend that no further consideration be given to the actions proposed by Brandywine Corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore Powell. Were there questions? Okay, was there anyone else who wished to speak whose name I did not call? I would like for someone to address the transportation issues that were raised. Okay, so this, yeah, so we do have the access via Moore Road, we have the, the intersection of Moore Road and, and Brandywine, we do have some transportation studies in here, we do have the, I did look at the level of service, and in some instances, it's level of service E and level of service F, and at, okay, so I do, no, that's my mistake there, okay. I do want to talk about, yeah, that's right, level of service F, and I do want to, and I would like for whomever's going to do this to talk a little bit about what we've, what we're proposing and why. So now, you know, it's your Burton applicant, so if you want to go first, and then we can have, who's going to speak for, for transportation? Mr. Burton? Okay, so that's, that, do you want to go first? Let's have you go first, and then Mr. Burton.
If I have an option, I'll let Mr. Burton go first.
No, you go first.
But I've seen that look.
It's, it's...
I'll, we'll take it.
Yeah, you take it.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity, and I do have other, and I want to, I want to thank Ms. Brooks and Ms. Powell for coming and their thoughts, and I do have responses to some of the other things, but obviously, traffic is the biggest concern. Route 5 is a, is a freeway, it's heavily traveled, it's a commuter route from St. Mary's in Charles County into Washington DC, we know the problems and tribulations with it, but I, Mr. Lenhart is here, who did the traffic impact analysis, not only for this property, but for most, all the developments in the area, so he's intimately familiar with not only what SHA's vision is and, and plan, but also how we've met adequacy in this case. So I think it just behooves me to let the expert speak, if that's okay?
No, that's fine, I would like to hear from Mr. Lenhart, and then Mr. Burton, anything that you have to add, and then, you know, when we finish with that, then you can come up and address everything else, okay? And can you raise the microphone a little bit, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, for the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. We did conduct a traffic impact study for the project. We, as Mr. Diaz mentioned in the presentation, we looked at Route 5 and Moore's Road, Moore's Road at the site access point, and Moore's Road at Brandywine Road. Of the three intersections, they all pass, except for the intersection of Maryland 5 at Brand, at Moore's Road, which is failing. And as a result of that, we are, have been conditioned to pay into the Brandywine Road Club through the legislation that was reaffirmed within the past few years. We are also aware of, and working with State Highway, who has a project, an active project along Route 5, they have done state, safety studies and prepared a project to move forward, which would close the median crossover at Moore's Road. It would install a temporary traffic signal at 5 and Earnshaw, which is...
Can you follow along with us, Mr. Diaz Campbell? So you're going to go back just a little bit, Mr. Lenhart, about the, so you would temporally, you would close the...
Yes, the, the intersection crossover, the median crossover at Maryland 5 and Moore's Road...
Okay.
Would be closed. And the State Highway Administration, in conjunction with that, is preparing plans and proposals to install a J-turn to the north of this site.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty for some reason.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty for some reason hearing you. If you could pull your mic up just a slight bit.
Certainly. State Highway Administration is preparing plans and pursuing funding to install a J-turn to the north of this site, which is for the residents that live on the east side of Route 5, that would now no longer be able to come out of the side street and turn left to go south, they would have to turn right, go north, yeah, about 2,000 feet or so, they'd make a U-turn and come back to the south and the state calls it J-turns.
Instead of a U-turn? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it is, okay, okay.
More progressive, I guess. And also, they would be installing a J-turn for southbound Route 5 to the north of Moore's Road that would work for the 5 at Earnshaw intersection, which they plan on putting a temporary traffic signal in and until such a point that they could get the J-turns installed and it would be a temporary measure. But, and then the interchange that's been completed to the south would be used for people on the west side of Moore's Road to use Brandywine Road and to go to the south and use the new crossover to get back to the north.
So, help me understand the J-turn, the implementation of the J-turn vis a vis the closing of the crossover, are they concurrent?
So the State Highway is pursuing funding, pursuing scheduling for this. I know that they've had public meetings and I just checked in the state CTP, it's not identified in the CTP yet, but they are moving forward and pursuing it. And so I can't tell you when it would happen. I, it should all happen at the same time because they are pursuing it as one, one project. And I know that the 5 at Earnshaw temporary traffic signal could move forward independently. It doesn't need to happen, it doesn't need to wait for the J-turn to happen. They already have the infrastructure built, they had flashing signals that they installed in the last year or two.
So, excuse me, Mr. Diaz Campbell, that's, that's where you have the cursor now?
Could you help me out, Mr. Lenhart?
5 at Earnshaw is further north, yes.
It's not on the slide.
Okay.
That's correct. It's about half a mile to a mile north.
I understand what temporary means, but can you explain what a temporary traffic signal is?
Yeah.
Well, I think temporary is until they can get the J-turn in. So the traffic signal would handle turning movements at 5 and Earnshaw until the J-turn could be installed. And then people at Earnshaw and Birch Hill would be able to go south and use that J-turn to be able to get back to the north. And at that point, I believe that the state would propose to move, remove that traffic signal.
Okay. Is that it? Is that all you have to add?
Unless you have questions, sure.
Mr. Burton, is there anything that you can add?
For the record, Glenn Burton with Transportation Section. At Earnshaw and, at Earnshaw and 5 today, there is a left turn lane for those that are heading northbound on 5, who wants to make a left turn onto, to the left. And unless there are signs that says you cannot make a U-turn, you could essentially make a U-turn today at that intersection. Obviously, if, if and when the closing off at Moore's Road becomes effective, then there would have to be some adjustment made to the signal timing, once that now becomes the official point for those citizens on the east side who wants to go south. But the possibility exists that you could make that U-turn today at Earnshaw. Although I suspect if and when the closing off occurs, they would probably have to make some further modification to the left turn lane that currently exists at Earnshaw. As far as, if I could just expand a little bit on the concerns of the citizens, I just wanna state for the record, we hear a lot of complaints, not just for this case, but for others, about safety. It's a common theme and our guidelines require an adequacy finding to be based on congestion or level of service, which is a measure of congestion. And so while I'm concerned about, the citizens concerned about safety, the fact is, there is no such thing as a safety finding per se. We are required by our decades-old policy to evaluate transportation facilities based on level of service, which is a measure of congestion. So I just wanna state that what was done in the staff report is consistent with our guidelines to look at the transportation facility.
Let me follow up on that just a little bit. So safety, sometimes, safety results from other issues other than the traffic count, the traffic volume. Sometimes it's a site issue, visibility issue, sometimes, I don't know, so, but right here, right now, I guess the citizens are saying it's because of the volume, the traffic volume?
I suspect, I wasn't here 43 years ago when the planning board established their guidelines for the first time, but I would imagine-
We heard you the first time, a decade old, but go ahead.
I would imagine the reason why safety is not a required finding of adequacy is because of the difficulty of the word itself. It's a very subjective word.
We just heard that argument.
It has all kinds of possible interpretation as to what safe actually means. So it would be difficult for me to sit here and say definitively that this intersection or this road is either safe or unsafe because of the subjectivity of the word itself. So luckily for us, the guidelines are very clear. Transportation adequacy is based on level of service, which is a measure of congestion. That's what the guidelines say, that's what was done here and many of the other cases that we have been involved with.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else you wanna add, Mr. Lenhart?
No, only that State Highway's looked at signalization at 5 and Moore's Road, it does not meet the warrants for signalization and they cannot-
Do you know why?
The volumes are not there. The signal warrants, manual for uniform traffic control devices, it's a national publication.
Okay, hold on a second, 'cause I wanna make sure I hear you and that they hear you.
Yes.
So you're, you're saying it's not warranted based on the national standard?
There's a national standard that all jurisdictions use, including State Highway Administration, has nine different warrants for signalization. And many of those are volume-based and you have to have a certain amount of volume on the main line, the line here, which would be Maryland 5, which certainly, there's enough volume on Maryland 5. But you also have to have a minimum threshold of traffic on the minor street, which would be Moore's Road. And it has to be met for at least eight hours out of the day to meet the State Highway's major volume warrant. That is not met here, it's not even close. And the State Highway has repeatedly said, in many different situations I work with them, they do not want to install a traffic signal that does not meet the warrants because it can cause many more accidents than it prevents.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we're clear because that's, that's the State Highway Administration that's beyond our control, but they do utilize a national standard.
They do and that standard is not met. And the State Highway, because it's not met, that's why they're pursuing other options. The closure of this median crossover is in keeping with the long-term goals of having a freeway here. And it solves the immediate safety concerns at that location. The installation of a temporary traffic signal at Moore's, I'm sorry, at Earnshaw and Birch Hill can handle the U-turn traffic that would be created from here. It may be circuitous, it may be something that the residents don't care for, but it solves a safety problem that's occurring today. And then the state would be pursuing the long-term funding for the J-turn or a similar solution to address those movements.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tedesco? Okay. Did you have a question? If you have a question, you have to come to the microphone. You can't talk from there. And we're not gonna have, we don't go back and forth.
Yeah, I understand, I just wanna be-
Just the microphone too, please.
I just wanna be quickly in saying, because we met with Peter Campanides from the State Highway Administration, our understanding, when we met with them, was that the signal at Earnshaw was gonna be permanent and that they had-
I'm sorry.
The signal at Earnshaw Drive would be permanent. He also told us that they had not put in a-
They, they who?
The state had not decided for a permanent fix for Moore's Road, they were thinking about J-turns. But what we told them is the amount, the distance between Moore's Road and we're, the gentleman here was talking about the U-turn, you still have to get to that lane. And you can't at certain times of the day. So that's where the issue is lying with Moore's Road and that J-turn theory or using the existing left lane, left turn lane. Even still with that, if you make that left turn on Earnshaw Drive, you have to take into consideration the traffic that is coming down Branch Avenue from Southern Maryland Hospital that is driving at minimum 55 miles per hour, which I've seen commercial vehicles go up to 80 miles per hour. So you have to give yourself the opportunity to make that left turn where there is no merge area and get yourself up to speed to be able to flow with the traffic depending on the time of day. So that's what I just wanted to add because the way he made it seem was it's just a simple, at the J-turn, they come over, they can do the J-turn and it's not. It's really not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and for the record, that was Ms. Patrice Brooks, okay. Okay, Mr. Tedesco?
I would echo Mr. Burton's comments with respect to the guidelines and adequacy findings. I think the staff report has gone through that correctly and should be adopted by the board. I would also point to page 11 of the staff report in reference to CR 9, 2017, and the finding required under section 24, 124 of the subdivision regulations with respect to the guidelines being, I'm sorry, the statute allowing the use of a road club to satisfy adequacy. So adequacy is met. The concerns that we're hearing are legitimate, let me say that. We're not here to dismiss any of the concerns of the citizens, but those concerns as far as the future improvements and upgrades to Maryland 5 is the responsibility of the state. You all have the responsibility to find adequacy, pursue it to your subdivision guidelines, which is what's been articulated in your staff report. It is us collectively, and by that I mean all of us in this building, not just on that dais or in this audience, but in this building, as well as our friends in Annapolis, to work to get the state to give us the proper funding that we need in this area of the county because we can't do it. We have been paying into the road club, all the developments in Brandywine, been paying into the road club. And we are, and I think I've said this before on other applications that I've stood before you on in Brandywine, we are starting to now finally see the fruits of those labors. We have the spine road being built from Brandywine Road to the shopping center through Brandywine, Timothy Branch. It's an arterial roadway. You've got dedication of the continuation of that spine road, you've got the interchange that's now open and operating at Acquae Creek Road and Brandywine Road and Route 5 just south of here. You've got the parking ride that's coming, we are starting to see it. Is it as fast as we want it? Is it going to address every resident on the east side tomorrow? No, it's not. But what's happening is a progression of improving that. And to that end, and that's the safety issue, to that end, SHA is aware of the issue, they are aware of the scenario. We need our politician friends to come up with additional funding because we are only obligated to contribute our share pursuant to the Brandywine Road Club, which then gets used. Those funds are being used partly for that interchange that was built, partly for the construction of the spine road, which will take local traffic off of 5 and 301. What you heard from Mr. Lenhart and from the, from Ms. Brooks, who attended the meeting with SHA, and I wasn't there, so I don't, I don't know what Mr. Campanides said, I've had plenty of meetings with Mr. Campanides, but they understand the issue at Moore's Road in that intersection. We understand that intersection needs to be closed. They will be the ones to close it. They could temporarily close it with barrels. And I think that they are endeavoring to do that. And as far as accessing the U-turn, there's plenty of distance for the cars or SHA wouldn't allow it for that J-turn in that temporary light or permanent light, whatever it may be. But there's also, unfortunately, this map doesn't show it, but Mr. Burton certainly knows it very well. You can kinda see in the left-hand top corner of your screen, there's an arterial master planned roadway on the west side of Route 5 that I think continues all the way to the east side. There's a project that you all recently approved that's requiring dedication of that road to Route 5. So these, my word, relief valves are coming. We can't thwart an application that's zoned commercially simply because SHA's not acting as fast as we all want them to. Our obligation is to pay in the road club, that's meeting our adequacy requirement under our code. And although safety is, and I'm not trying to minimize and I'm not trying to dismiss it, it's a concern of all of us. You know, we all travel these roads, I'm not insensitive to that. But like I said, it takes all of us in this building to get what we, what we need. In the meantime, we are doing our, what was required of us and we are starting to see those improvements. With respect to the police response times, I think Mr. Diaz Campbell's summary was correct. I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding from Ms. Brooks, and I think she hit it on in the last sentence, she read of the memorandum that your staff sent out regarding the police response times. That is really, that's residential development, I think it's in the last sentence. This commercial development's tested differently than the residential development. So that was a little bit of a red herring, so to speak. But the police response times, I think, is actively being worked on. There are reasons beyond development on why the police response times are, that we have gone into a great length circa 2011 and 12 when we demonstrated that the reporting was just flawed. I don't wanna get into that 'cause it's not germane to this subdivision, 'cause it's a commercial subdivision, but I would just say that it's not relevant in this case. As far as, you know, the comments, and I understand the sensitivity of, you know, we don't want this development at this location. But again, it's commercially zoned, it's been commercially zoned for more than 20 years, if not longer. The property to the immediate north on Moore's Road is all commercially zoned, it's a auto sales lot, I believe, and there's a landscape business. These residents live next to a freeway, next to commercially zoned property. And so while I wish I could give everybody every use that they want to support every case that I have, we don't have another use on this property as of yet. Hopefully, it'll be something that they would like to have, but the notion of trucks going in and out of the neighborhood is also misleading. The trucks will enter the commercially zoned property and stay within the commercially zoned property and exit out of the commercially zoned property, so. And I think going towards the safety argument again, there's, you know, your staff has recognized SHA's already denial of access along our frontage of Route 5. I couldn't put in a right-in, right-out access, would love to, but I can't because they've already denied access along this frontage. So that coupled with the potential of additional safety issues, staff has correctly recommended the B9 access easement. So with that, Madam Chair, you know, I, all the guidelines have been met, all the legal requirements have been met, there's substantial evidence in the record, and I think you've heard sufficient testimony with respect to SHA's acknowledgement and hopeful soon-to-be future plans of implementation to improve safety conditions out there.
Okay, so I think, I recognize, I think we all recognize the issue, and we hear it in our own neighborhoods and we hear it in our own neighborhoods, that people may have issues with, with safety and, and we have it in our own neighborhoods versus what our guidelines say. And so there's a legal standard and then there's what the people in the neighborhoods experience. And so, and it's, sometimes they don't reconcile and it's, and it's difficult. I do wanna point out, this is a commercial zone, commercial miscellaneous zone, which allows for commercial uses. So even though there are residents there, this application is- So even though there are residents there, this application is, takes place in a commercial zone. But I think there's maybe something we can do in terms of, I heard you loud and clear, and maybe collectively, we, as this entity and the council and whoever can work, try to, for lack of a better word, encourage some quicker response from, from S.H.A. on this matter, to the extent that they're able to.
And I said collectively for a reason, I'm not trying to pass the buck, and we have an, we have an obligation as well as being not only land use attorneys in this jurisdiction, but also representing numerous property owners and clients. You know, I'm just reminded that I hear a lot, you know, we're all better, we're better together than we are apart. So that was the kind of the premise of collectively increasing the safety.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got, okay. Okay, thank you.
I think the only other item that's left is-
Oh, the, the condition?
-satisfy Mr. Dorner on the language of New 5, which I don't know where, don't know where we stand.
Okay, so we need a minute.
Unfortunately, I've had to delegate that to Mr. Lenhart while I was-
You're busy?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's take a two-minute break, and while we have a two-minute break, you may see Ms. Moore Powell, please. So we're gonna go off for about two minutes, okay? Okay. Enough on the condition. Are we ready with the revised language to applicant's exhibit number one? Okay. You know what, I'm having a senior moment.
Lording, Madam Chair.
Go, yeah.
Peter Goldsmith, Senior Counsel, for the record.
I was gonna say, Mr. Peter. Okay. Okay, Mr. Goldsmith, okay.
We have consulted with the applicant and transportation staff, and this is the proposed revised condition number five.
The microphone, yeah.
Language is, "Prior to approval of the first building permit for parcel one, comma, the applicant shall provide a fee of $1,680 to $3,360 to the Department of Permits, Inspections, and Enforcement for the installation of at least four but no more than eight share-the-road bikeway signage assemblies to be located per the direction of D-PY."
Okay, that works? Does that work? Okay.
Did you get it?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, well, okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Powell, you had a question? No? Okay. Okay. Okay, you, all right, so your address, I'm not gonna go, is there something that's germane to the decision?
Okay.
Just come to, because we're getting ready to make a, getting ready to go to a vote, okay? And then when you finish, then the applicant pursuant to our rules and regulations, then the applicant gets to go after you. Okay.
I get a little nervous now.
Okay, don't get nervous.
I hope I remember what I was gonna say.
Hold on a second. Come to the, okay, get to the microphone, though. Whatever you're saying.
My concern-
Breathe in your name again.
My name is Carley Moore Powell, resident of Moore's Road, East Side. All right. My concern is, I know there's a lot of planning, you have your national standards and the county and all of that, but we are people and we live there.
Yes. That's what we were saying, too.
Yes. And so, if there, I know that the master plan came out in 2013. We're still there. There've been improvements. We're still blocked in. So everything has been worked on with the roundabout and all of that and everything else, and we're still there being blocked in. And you're talking about the U-turn, which is gonna be even more difficult for us, because we have to go north to go south.
You will mention-
And we're already doing that anyway.
Okay.
All right, so my point is that, I know there are plans in place and things of that of that sort, but sometimes I think you can go outside of that and look at the picture as a whole and see what actually needs to be done. Sometimes before you build, you need, you need your base things first before you can move on. And I think that's basically what we're looking at also. So to, to develop, there's some other things that needs to take place for the residents there in order for us to survive, coming out each day to enter the highway. So I, that's all I can remember at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything you cared to add, Mr. Tedesco?
I'm not sure.
Okay, was there anyone else who wished to speak, whose name I did not call? Is there a motion?
Yeah, that's good.
Does anybody else have anything else to add? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I just want the citizens-
Microphone.
The citizens that we do take safety into concern. Unfortunately, on the transportation, we just look at adequacy. But what Mr. Tedesco said is quite right, and it requires the whole village to speak to Annapolis, and perhaps Annapolis would hear you if we could, instead of spending all the money that's being proposed to spend on managed lanes, perhaps we need to look at the infrastructure that affects where people live. So with that, I would move that we approve staff findings, as well as the recommendations of staff and conditions, as further modified by applicant exhibit number one, and modified further by our council, and put on the record with regards to the bike signs, and approve preliminary plan 4-10, 18026, and TCP 1-014-2019.
I'd like to second that motion, but also associate myself with Mr. Gerald's comments.
Step is also recommending a variation to Section B-12.
With the variation as well. I apologize.
I can see variation here. 24-122A.
Variation from 24-122A. Thank you.
And you did TCP? You did the TCP?
Yes, I did TCP.
Okay. You had a motion and a second. Was there discussion?
Under discussion. So, yeah, I'll associate myself with Commissioner Gerald's pointed comments, but also just emphasizing on, it takes a village to kind of bring up a community. So I was pushing back on an item or on condition or recommendation of five, because the cost cap is $7,300. And I realize I don't wanna nickel and dime every developer, and I don't wanna discourage the development in this area, or become too much of a pain for the land use attorneys that have to come up here and represent them. But we have to start somewhere, and what's being proposed today was half of that amount. So it's not, it's not terribly high comparison to that. And I realize that there might be some discussion of what's adequate versus a regulation of the cost cap. But what we're giving up here is a cost cap, not what's adequate or what D-PY thinks is okay. And if we wanna change that, that should go to the county council, and that should be changed in that way, if that's gonna be how they want us to, to consider these cases. If we look at the, the cost cap and being half of that, I don't want to be over-regulating and requiring an applicant to put in too many signs if D-PY says it's too many. But we never had to have this discussion today. This could've been done yesterday, it could've been done a week ago, and it'd be good if we can anticipate these sorts of things going ahead, because what we could've done is had some form of flexible finding within there that says something like, if D-PY says they don't want eight, they want four, then we could have striping on part of the lane. Or say they say that they only want two, then what they might, what we might come up with is we have a pedestrian crossing across Route 5, and it's a little bit safer in that area. I think there are ways of kind of getting towards these cost caps within reason, not exceeding them. And we don't even always have to get up to the cost cap, that's totally fine. But I don't like seeing the sort of back and forth of having to figure out the language on the spot and putting both staff and attorneys in sort of an awkward situation, because we can get it wrong if we're doing it within a couple of minutes, and then we have to come back and we have to revise it later. So to the extent that we can go before the cases come up and work these kinds of things out, and potentially have a series of options, that'd be really helpful, because these kinds of cases are good in the ability to put out infrastructure in here, things that are related to the case and around the developments, to improve the areas that people are walking, biking, jogging, whatever it might be in these, in these vicinities. And I don't think we need to stop at something that's like $1,600, if a cost cap is $7,300. There's still room that we could've done this and improved this particular case in some ways, because this will be a public benefit around the area, and that will have secondary valuations that'll be capitalized into these property values down the road as well. The nicer you make it, the more money you're gonna make off these developments. So if we work hand in hand ahead of these cases, I think we'll have better products kind of going forward. Those are my comments for this case.
Thank you. And I guess, you know, I just wanna thank the citizens for coming. We're endeavoring to, we hear your concerns, and we're endeavoring to work through your concerns in accordance with the laws that have been enacted and the plans that are in place here. We have to balance those things. But I will turn to our staff and see what it is, if anything, that we can do to reach out to S.H.A. and see if we have any, together, and we should work with the council, together, we can improve the situation there. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, we're going right on through. We're gonna, we, we're tempted to break for lunch, but we won't, we're gonna go right on through for Amber Ridge 4-19032. We want, Ms. Thompson, we congratulated you in absentia.
Right there in the red. That's what I'm talking about this morning. She's, she got permission to come over here, okay? Yeah. She's been with us everything. She's interned.
Okay, so who's, Mr. Diaz Campbell?
All right. So, for the record once again, I am Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner with the subdivision zoning section. Item eight on the agenda is the planning of subdivision for Amber Ridge, 4-19032. Subject project proposes 195 lots and 26 parcels for a total of 195 townhouse dwelling units and 20,000 square feet of commercial development. As a matter of housekeeping, staff has received one item of additional backup. This is a memo from-
Is this mic on, or are you talking into it?
We have a memo from the planning department's special projects section for this project as well, also providing an updated analysis for staff's original memorandum regarding adequate public facilities. It demonstrates the police facilities to serve the subjects that are adequate and does not change the type of adequacy in the technical staff report. This item was provided by 4 noon on Wednesday and is concluding the additional backup. For this one, staff would note that there is a typo in the memo that the police district is two, not five. The site is located in the eastern part of Prince George's County, within planning area 74B and Council District 4. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of southbound North Crane Highway or US 301, approximately 1,200 feet south of its intersection with Mitchellville Road. Subject site is located in the mixed-use transportation-oriented MXT zone. The site is bound on the north by the South Bowie Recreational Center in the open space zone, on the west by single-family detached dwellings in the rural residential zone, and the south by commercial uses in the commercial office zone, and on the east by US 301 with single-family detached dwellings beyond in the rural agricultural zone. The site is located outside but adjacent to the city of Bowie, Bowie municipal boundary. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently vacant. Existing trees on site are proposed to be removed. In the northwest corner of the site is an existing stormwater pond to be used by the This photo shows another view of the site from a bird's eye perspective. Site map shows that the topography on the site, on the site slopes moderately downward towards both the north and the south. Master plan right-of-way map shows US 301. Master plan of transportation proposes changes to the facilities within the right-of-way. There's a proposed arterial roadway abutting the site and a proposed freeway beyond. These proposed changes do not immediately affect the proposed development. There is no right-of-way dedication proposed or required with this application. The five critical intersections determined to be impacted by development are shown by the yellow ovals on the slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. Given the proposed development, it was found that improvements should be made to the intersections of US 301 and Pointer Ridge Drive, as well as US 301 and Mitchellville Road, in order to maintain acceptable levels of service. The preliminary plan shows 195 lots and 26 parcels are proposed, outlined in red. Accurate public facilities, including water, sewer, fire, rescue, and police facilities, are available to serve the site. The existing public right-of-way, as well as proposed private streets, are shown in dark blue. The existing access easement, which would allow the development access to Pointer Ridge Drive through Pointer Ridge Place, is shown in light blue. The preliminary plan is in general conformance with CSP-16007, the approved conceptual site plan for the site. A conceptual site plan was required because of the site's MXT zoning. The MXT zone also requires a detailed site plan to be approved for this property. By the required order of approval stipulated by code, this DSP can be approved after the preliminary plan of subdivision. The illustrated plan shows the proposed layout of the dwellings, the location of the commercial areas, and the locations of proposed onsite recreation areas. 16-foot wide townhomes are shown in purple, 20-foot wide townhomes are shown in yellow, and 24-foot wide townhomes are shown in orange. Commercial parcels are along the US 301 frontage. Open spaces are shown throughout the site. The Department of Parks and Recreation has requested the applicant provide public off-site recreation improvements at the South Bowie Community Center. Their request includes a loop trail and an outdoor fitness area. At the time of this preliminary plan of subdivision, staff is not yet recommending that these improvements be required. The applicant has agreed to, at a minimum, provide a trail on public and private property leading from development to Pittsfield Lane. However, the facilities ultimately to be provided will include a combination of private onsite facilities proper by the applicant and public off-site facilities agreed upon between the applicant and Department of Parks and Recreation. The facilities to be provided will be determined prior to the approval of the detailed site The applicant has requested a variation from Section 24-128B-12 of the subdivision regulations to allow alternate, alternate placement of the public utility easement required along Adamson Way, proposed private street. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth in finding eight of the technical staff report. The applicant has also requested variation from Section 24-128B-7A to let the lots in development be served by private alleys while fronting on private streets or open space parcels. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth in finding 12 of the technical staff report. At the time of this application, at the time of this application's acceptance, the applicant submitted a variance request to Section 27-548H of the zoning ordinance. This section specified a minimum lot width of 18 feet for townhouses in the MXT zone. The variance request was to allow 50 lots to attain a lot width of only 16 feet, as shown in yellow on this slide. Staff recommended disapproval of the variance, because there are no extraordinary conditions for the property or exceptional practical difficulties faced by the applicant that would warrant a variance. However, the applicant has informed staff that they intend to withdraw the variance request at this hearing. This application is subject to the woodland conservation ordinance, and a Type 1 tree conservation plan has been filed for the application. Again, this TCP 1 shows the subject parcels in red, the right-of-way in blue, and in addition, the 2.08 acres of woodland to be cleared in green. To meet woodland conservation ordinance requirements, 4.93 acres of offsite woodland conservation will be provided. In conclusion, the subdivision zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision 4-19032, Amber Ridge, the Type 1 tree conservation plan, and variations from Section 24-128B-12 and 24-128B-7A, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. If the variance request is not withdrawn, staff recommends to now the variance to Section The applicant has communicated proposed revisions to conditions of approval contained in the technical staff report, and staff concurs with- in the technical staff report, and staff concurs with these proposed revisions. The revisions include but are not limited to ones related to on- and off-site recreation in accordance with the need to make a determination at the time of detailed site plan if the on what recreation facilities would be appropriate. If the revisions are approved, staff will revise the Parks and Recreation finding when drafting the resolution. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of Mr. Diaz Campbell at this juncture? Okay, Mr. Tedesco?
I certainly hope you're not sick of me yet.
Well, no.
Well, don't answer that. I didn't ask your staff that question. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Matthew Tedesco of the Law Firm, back to me, Hozie, here on behalf of the applicant, CBR Amber Ridge, sorry, Amber Ridge LLC, represented here today by Mr. Ed Gold. Also with me is Jessica McMahon from NVR and Andy Garrish from Caruso Homes, the builders on the project, and our civil engineers and land planners, Alex Legas and Phil Hughes from Rogers Consulting, and Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic and Consulting. If you're sick of me, I'm sure you're really sick of Mike.
You know what? We're sending something, because you've been talking-
Thank you.
-all day. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we can hear it in your voice.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry. First and foremost, again, I think I've repeated it a number of times today, but as you can tell, there's been a lot of work going into today's hearing. We've had multiple cases. If I could speak candidly, Eddie and I have, and Sherry have been working along with Brian on a lot of these cases and issues, and I do want to thank them publicly for working with us. And although we thought we had all the conditions and the last one worked out, we certainly believe we have all the conditions and this one worked out. So I do also want to acknowledge Mr. Joe Minor is in the room from the city of Bowie, as well as Mr. Terry Rogers, who is the Chair of the Bowie Advisory Planning Board, as well as the President of the South Bowie Civic, I think you're still the President, yes, the President of the South Bowie Civic Association, and some citizens that are here as well, Mr. Aido, who he and I have been working a long time together on this project. So as-
Us two. I think he might have been back at DeMatho.
Well, and I was just, you just, you've come and beat me to it. This property has a long history, and we're not going to go all the way back to the beginning, but I will go back to at least the last 15 years, 10 years. You all will remember that this property was subdivided and platted for over 200,000 square feet of commercial shopping center. It was zone CSC. It was platted. It was shovel-ready. Pointer Ridge, the giant left, we could never get an anchor. We went to the master plan, the Bowie vicinity master plan. What did it say? It recommended mixed-use land use for the mixed-use, for the Pointer Ridge mixed-use activity center. We rezoned it to MXT in 2014. We were before you in 2017 for a conceptual site plan. We are now before you on the preliminary plan for the residential, preliminary plan for the residential and the commercial pads. We will be back in relatively short order on the detailed site plan for the residential component. No users yet on the commercial, but that would also subsequently follow with a detailed site plan. We met with, we had two Bowie Advisory Planning Board hearings. We had two city council, we were on the agenda twice for the city council on, not to speak for Mr. Minor, but on Monday of this week, the city council moved to remove both, we had the preliminary plan and the DSP on their agenda. They were reviewing them concurrently, move to remove both items from their agenda indefinitely. So they have taken no action on this application or the subsequent future DSP application. That being said, the biggest issue that we heard during those hearings was, and Mr. Aido, not to steal his thunder, but will be speaking to traffic and the concerns, and primarily a median break on 301 to allow traffic out of the site to go northbound and/or traffic coming northbound to turn left into the site. As I stated then, and I will state now, my client, Mr. Gold, was and is, was committed to providing that. That was, if I could just take a step back, that median break in light, traffic light access was permitted by S H A back when the shopping center was approved. This is a significant reduction in trips now from 200,000 square foot shopping center. Based upon that, S H A, and it's in your backup material, on December 10th indicated that they will no longer support that median break. We had a meeting with S H A with Mr. Minor and Mr. Stevens, who articulated the city's and some of the citizens' desire to see that. We proffered a number of different scenarios. I think there was three options in total. S H A came back and determined and said, no, option one, which is the right-in, right-out, existing right-in, right-out access points on southbound 301 is what they will permit. That is where we're at. We will not be able to obtain that median break. So although you may hear things today with respect that it's needed, they want, S H A has determined that it's not, that the impact associated with this property is such that it's far less than when the shopping center, and they believe that having that median break and having that 90-degree intersecting point is far more dangerous than having the right-in, right-out with the ability to merge over to make a U-turn at Pointer Ridge Drive and head north. With that being said, we are required to make transportation improvements to both Pointer Ridge Drive intersection and Mitchellville and 301. The Pointer Ridge Drive intersection will significantly improve that intersection. We have exhibits, but basically right now there's one, if you're coming down on Pointer Ridge Drive and heading east to 301, there's currently one lane that you go across the median and then you turn left and go northbound 301. We're going to be providing actually a total of three lanes. There'll be two, one left, one through and left, and then one right. Actually, two throughs and a left and one right. Mitchellville, most of the improvements have already been made at Mitchellville and 301 at the median. We will be adding a dedicated right turn lane heading southbound. Those improvements will improve the level of service at those intersections to level of service D, which is adequate in this area. And so those are fairly significant improvements that you will see significant improvements at the point, primarily at the Pointer Ridge and 301 intersection because of just the double capacity of queuing at that light, which currently doesn't exist right now at the single lane. So with that, Madam Chair, I don't think we have anything else. I know there's some citizens here. I think I'll reserve additional comments to be in response to them. But, you know, again, we appreciate the city's review, Mr. Minor, Mr. Stevens' review in this case. I will state that both the planning staff recommended approval as well as the BAPB recommended approval. The city council, however, took no action. So with that, we, you know, again, would reserve to respond to any citizen comments. I do want to, before I walk away from the podium, although Mr. Diaz Campbell said if we were not to withdraw, they would recommend the nonvariance, but we are withdrawing the variance for the 16-foot wide lots. I have a formal letter to that effect, if we can have entered.
Okay.
And I did provide a copy of this to staff and-
Sorry.
-Mr. Goldsmore earlier today.
So I don't have, I only have, I have a couple of citizens, I think, signed up to speak.
Yeah. Before that, Madam Chair, can I just, I just want to, in the letter, I do request that, and I think it probably goes without saying, but I do want to request that, that the findings be adjusted in the resolution so that it's not, there are no actual findings towards the variance, and there is no denial of the variance, so that it has been withdrawn and the board didn't consider it.
Okay, good. Okay.
Okay?
So we'll have to take care of that, depending on how the motion goes.
The other-
Because initially it was for, the variance was for 50, 16-foot, right?
Correct.
But now, but we're, that's all.
That's all.
Okay, so we don't need all of that. Okay.
That's right. And I think, I referenced the page numbers in my letter.
Okay, good.
Pages 24 to 27.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The other, the other item of housekeeping, and I apologize.
Let's accept this into the record as applicant's exhibit number one. Okay.
The other housekeeping item, I should have done these from the outset, so I apologize. I'm doing this backwards. But the other housekeeping item is, there is a finding in the staff report, at the time, correct finding in the staff report with respect to the expiration date of the stormwater concept approval. That has since been extended, and so I just want to make sure the new letter is in the record, and I do have a revised finding with the new date, but I want this in the record as well so that staff has it. If I could have that, and it's two-sided, have that marked as-
What page, let me see, what page is the finding with regard to the stormwater management plan?
Your indulgence. Seven, seven, bottom of seven.
Here's an extra one down. Will. Okay, so we're going to page seven, and hold on a second. So-
So in my exhibit of new conditions, I have this new finding with the correct, so you can adopt that.
So we have, oh, I see, it's number four. Okay. So we have a new, an extension of the stormwater management concept approval. Let's look for the date. February, that was dated February-
February 5, 2023.
2020. And, well, to 2023.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to have that marked and accepted into the record as applicant's exhibit number two. Okay.
My last exhibit, and I can, again, wait till after the other speakers speak, or I can submit it out, is the conditions.
This is good, go with it.
All right. Can I contribute to a wider podium? Can I contribute to a wider podium?
No.
Yeah, at the course special feels, they give you that nice big wide podium.
So you can put all your stuff in.
Yeah.
Let me just remind you, this is not our room or our podium. We are guests in this room. This belongs to the county council.
It's a we thing, huh?
Yeah. It's not even a we thing. We're just guests. As a matter of fact, we're a tenant.
Maybe I'll send a message that we want you to have less stop by the time you walk in here, so you don't need to put it in the-
We work on that. We work really hard for today. Trust me.
Okay, so we have proposed revised conditions that we will mark and accept into the record as applicant's exhibit number three. Okay. So we have the finding to change the date. Okay.
Correct. And then one, one B, we added, so if you read the first sentence of one B, it says revise the lot shown on the plan so that no lot has a width less than 18 feet. And so we added to the second sentence, revise the minimum lot width shown on the general notes column from 16 feet to no less than 18 feet.
Okay, got it.
So that, the no less than is in both places.
Okay. And then number five is revisions extensions. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess theoretically that could be deleted, now that we've got the extension, but at the time that we presented this, it wasn't. But it's fine to just, it doesn't hurt to leave it.
Let's just keep it. Okay. Number 10, commercial. And Mr. Diaz Campbell, if there's any issues that you have, please let us know. I think you're in agreement though, right?
Yes, we are in agreement on the conditions.
Yeah, you did say that. Okay.
So the bike racks are associated with the commercial development, so we've just, that's just a clarifier on the DSP for, because we're going to do a DSP for the residential and a DSP for the commercial. 12 gets to the on- and off-site park facilities. And I would just state for the record, Mr. Diaz Campbell indicated that the findings would be, the findings under finding five in the staff report, Parks and Recreation, would be updated assuming these conditions are adopted consistent with the conditions. I just want to state for the record that the added language in condition 12, I would like to see replicated in the finding, because although Mr. Xyla and his referral still makes the recommendation for the loop and the fitness, we're going to determine all that at the time of DSP. So I just want to have that language in the finding as well, and I'm happy to work with-
Okay.
-Mr. Diaz Campbell on that.
Okay.
Mr. Tedesco, just so I'm clear, so on paragraph 12, do you want to add the language in blue as part of the finding as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
13, again, it's just based upon 12, 13 becomes unneeded with respect to the fact that what it's going to be will finalize that at DSP. 14, we've substituted trails and fitness area for facilities. You know, we're committing to doing on and off-site, and those fitness facilities will be determined. I mean, one of the reasons, just to say this for the record, one of the reasons is with the willingness to withdraw the variance, our unit number is probably going to come down some, so our overall financial requirement from the analysis is going to come down. So we have to figure out what improvements fit within that range. So that's kind of the reason for that. 15, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. 19, kind of the same logic as 13. And then 20-
20 is new?
20 is new, again, at the staff's request that I threw into my exhibit. It's basically requiring, we'll have an RFA for the private facilities on park property, and we'll have an RFA for the private facilities on our property. Ideally, I would like to have done them in two, in one RFA, but I was, if this works, if it makes everyone happy, I'm here to op's. I don't, I don't think it's an issue. I can do two.
Okay. So that was it. Are there any questions? Send the rest of them will be renumbered accordingly. Okay. Questions? All right, let's go down the list. Mr. Minor. Followed by Mr. Aido.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. I'm Joe Minor of the city of Bowie. Planning Director, I have very little to say this afternoon. Mr. Tedesco informed you that the city council decided on Monday night to not take up the cases, in particular this preliminary plan. The city did go through our normal process of notifying people within 500 feet of the property of the application, and we conducted a stakeholders' meeting and two Bowie Advisory Planning Board hearings and met with the State Highway Administration looking for access solutions that would be acceptable to the residents. But as Mr. Tedesco pointed out, Monday night, the city council chose to remove the case from their agenda. Their thinking is that, you know, we have a new council that was elected in November. Their thinking was that they, they didn't have the power to turn the project down, which was, I think, their persuasion. They felt that since they could not get involved directly, that they would refrain from getting involved in the case. They also felt that the project is really past the point in the development pipeline process where you could turn the project down. In other words, if the project is able to meet the criteria for approval, it's effectively entitled to that approval. And so the council is aware of those things, and they just chose not to take a position either way on the case. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Minor. Okay. Mr. Aido. Now, you don't, if you'd like to come up here, you can. If you, if you want to testify, I'm there, you can too. Well, I wouldn't say old. I'd say we are all older than we were, but not old. And you're gonna have to adjust that mic up a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's funny how each threshold you pass, you know, like you hit, you hit 30 and you say, gee, I did that at 29. Why can't I do it at 30? And then you hit 40 and you say, I did it at 39 and I can't do it now at 40. Now, at 89, I don't know why I can't do it. I did it at 88.
Wow. Good for you. Good for you. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. Before you start, first, you're gonna have to introduce yourself for the record, but before you do that, when is the big 90?
The what, the 90?
When do you turn 90?
October 3rd.
Oh, how old? So this year, this is your year?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Wonderful.
I only got 10 more years when I can say I'm one year old.
Okay. You're a mess still.
Okay.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Madam Chairman, Chairperson, and members of the planning board, my name is Rosario Aido, and I live at 16403 Pointer Ridge Drive, Bowie, Maryland. Aido, and I live at sixteen, four oh three Pointer Ridge Drive, Bowie, Maryland. Mr. Tedesco kind of must have read my, my sheet here, because he stole my thunder. But anyway, I've been, I've been standing before you for the last thirty years. And I've stood before this and other Prince George's planning boards contesting this development, as it went from shopping center to apartment complex, and now a townhouse complex. And it still has a great traffic problem that won't go away. I listened very carefully what you said with the last development. And I think that this situation, that State Highway Administration had to be forced by someone in the state government, I don't know who, but who it was, made, State Highway Administration put in that crossroad and the traffic light. Now, they're saying it's not needed. But still, the safety situation still exists, whether there's, whether there's two thousand cars coming out of that development, or four hundred to six hundred or nine hundred, as long as, as they produce children, and they get cars, they, so the number of cars that are going to come out of that development is going to be great. As it is now, when, when this development is fully put together, there'll be eight hundred to a thousand human beings sitting, residing in that piece of nineteen acres of ground. If it's important for a shopping center to have a traffic light and a crossover, I cannot understand why eight hundred to a thousand human beings aren't entitled to the same privilege of a shopping center or a building complex. They should have the same privilege, safety, to get in and out of their development. As you see from the, from the diagrams up there, it has one main entrance, one in and one out. As you know, thirty years ago, when I stood here and berated you, stating that you're responsible for all those crosses on three oh one, because you approved the developments without taking the safety of the people, and I was dressed down too, I must say. But anyway, at that time, your former planning board member, Mrs. McNeil, I don't know if she's still with us. Well, God rest her soul, she requested of your general counsel, what are our priorities? And your general counsel answered, your first concern is the safety of Prince George's County citizens. I heard you, I just heard you today, that you have the safety of the people in mind when you pass these things. But in this case, I think an exception has been done here. State Highway Administration has already approved a traffic light and a crossover for a shopping center. Just because it has been rezoned to mixed use, that safety factor still exists. And they should put in that traffic light and crossover. I heard Mr. Tedesco say that State Highway Administration said that the crossover would be dangerous. Well, if it was, if it's dangerous for eight hundred to a thousand people to use that crossover, why wasn't it dangerous for a shopping center? Take that into consideration. Besides, without this traffic light and crossover, it will put extreme hardships on the surrounding Bowiean infrastructure. The streets will not be able to take the extra traffic with our great hardship on the surrounding neighborhood streets. Right now, we have traffic coming in from three oh one south that takes the cutoff at one ninety-seven and comes down Mitchellville Road. I used to be able to get on Mitchellville Road without waiting. Now, I can't. I have to wait two, three minutes to get on the road. And then, when I'm driving on the road at the speed limit, someone goes, excuse me, it rings into my hearing gates. Someone, some, somebody with road rage comes around on the right side and goes down the side of the road and, and tries to beat me. One time, I foolishly, I challenged the guy. And I almost caused, I almost caused him to have an accident. And I apologized to him, whoever he was. But I just, I guess I got in the road rage mode like he did. So as, and what they do is they come down, down Mitchellville Road, and they come up Pittsfield Lane, and then they cut down on Pointer Ridge Drive. And then, when I get to my house, I can't get into my driveway, because I have traffic behind me that has to go past before I can get into my driveway.
So you mean they're not, they're not slowing down when you signal, is that what you're saying, to turn, to turn into your driveway?
Right.
Okay.
Right. I put, I put my flashing, my flashers on, and I, what I do to keep myself so I can get out of the, out of my driveway fast enough, I back into my driveway. I've been doing that, believe me, for fifty years, backing into my driveway.
Me too.
And then when I come out, I still have to wait to get out of my driveway to go where I want to go. So as you can see, traffic right now is, is at a point where it's taxing the streets in, in South Bowie. So, as I said, if, if, yeah, if SHA found it necessary for a shopping center and an office building complex, I give you an example of Gallant Fox Complex at Route one ninety-seven and Route four fifty. And I also give you another example of Collington Plaza, how the SHA had to modify that exit, many, many, after many accidents and deaths. Accidents and deaths had to occur before State Highway Administration found it necessary to make the changes. We have a situation here where we don't have to go take that situat, take that for granted. We can do it by having a traffic light and a crossover, just like the shopping center. You will be protecting our, your citizens, and you will have less accidents. If you don't, when they come out on the right side, you're going to have someone that's late for work, and he's going to shoot out to make that left turn, which he can't do. He can't make that left-hand turn in the space that he has to get to the corner. And he's going to get T-boned. He's not going to get sideswiped. He's going to get T-boned. And you're going to have a death. Not just, not just a damaged car, but a death. So I ask you to please, please, either put, either, if you cannot approve this traffic light and crossover, then disapprove this development. Otherwise, put the request, request in that they put in a traffic light and a crossover, and if need be, let it go to the Supreme Court. Thank you very much for your attention and your consideration of my request. And by the way, Mr. Dornar, happy birthday.
[laughing]
I'm sorry you have to spend your, your day in here. Thank you.
I hope I live as many years as you, and as good of health as you are when I get there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aido. Were there any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Ruth Ann Snyder, followed by Terry Rogers.
I'm sure. I've grown old with this development. It's in its third decade of the development process.
It is.
And as an adjoining property, oh, I have handouts.
Okay, so Mr. Cosby, will, can you show it to Mr. Tedesco first, so he can see what it is?
Sure, I'll leave in a generous spirit. I'll give you that.
Okay, thank you. And also, and also, before you, before you really go forward, you'll remember to introduce yourself for the record. Okay, identify yourself.
My name is Ruth Ann Snyder. I reside at seventeen oh seven Pittsfield Lane, Bowie, Maryland. And I just want to win. I've lived here since August eighteenth, nineteen sixty-two. My parents moved us out here, and we had to know the exact date.
Thank you.
Because there were so many kids.
Thank you.
As an adjoining property owner, I have firsthand knowledge of the property's issues and its negative impacts on the surrounding communities.
Okay, let me, before you go any further, let me, explain to me what this is.
Okay, what this is, is it's, I was getting ready to do that.
Okay.
It's part of a hundred-plus paper that was done by the geology department as a thesis for the University of Maryland. As it says, I have the copyright on there, because my father was an editor, and you have to put the copyright, in two thousand and five, regarding the Marlboro clay in Prince George's County. And we're all familiar with it from the Fort Washington incident, which cost the county millions of dollars.
Okay, hold on one second.
This isn't a court of law. You can't.
No, 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 yes, yes, you can. Hold on a second, hold on a second. First of all, let's give him the microphone. What, this is an administrative hearing, so, just so everybody's clear, it's an administrative hearing. So the, you don't have to go anywhere, Ms. Snyder.
I'm just standing here.
No, no, you don't have to go anywhere. What I'm trying to, hold on, Mr. Tedesco. This is an administrative hearing. The strict rules of evidence do not apply at an administrative hearing. However, what is submitted, the one criteria that we do have is that it must be relevant. Any evidence that's submitted into the record must be relevant. There is a process for objections and cross-examination in our hearing, so that, that part is true. So now, were you trying to say, she didn't even say, she didn't get a chance to say why, hold on a second. She, Ms. Snyder didn't get a chance to say why she was offering it into the record. Okay, and.
I just wanted to have the microphone, because I probably intend to object.
Okay, so Ms. Snyder, that's, we, that's why I said you didn't have to go anywhere. So please come back to the podium, because the one thing that we need to know is pursuant to the rules is why you're offering it into the record.
She's reading this in a barn.
Well, ma'am, I asked you to stay there, because he does have a right to object.
Okay, all right, let's start over.
Once we know.
Stormwater management. If, Mr. DS Campbell, could you put up your bird's eye view, like the Google map? A stormwater management has been a issue on this property. At one point, oh, actually, where that green dot is, at one point, there was a stormwater management pond, which was finally fixed after twenty-five years.
Right there?
That ran into our yards.
Okay.
It created a river in the property next door, the yard next door. It continued across the community center field, and it shut down the playground and the community center. I was out with the soil conservation district, and I didn't realize that had been going on for years, until they walked, until we walked it. And so it had to be closed. So there is a identified stormwater management issue, a history of it. And much of the runoff can be attributed to Marlboro clay. In this two thousand and five study done by a University of Maryland student, along with professors, they went around the county, which is what you have up there, and in places where the state highway had easements, they did soil core sampling and geomap, whatever. I'm in the healthcare profession, I don't, I just assume it's correct. And they found these Marlboro clay deposits. In previous meetings, we have asked, and they have done them, for the soil core samples, which are required by the counties, which this is, stormwater management plan, and have been for decades. My brother was in the building industry. Our property, Levitt did not buy that property. That was the only piece of property he did not buy. And I have to believe there was a reason. The water still continues, even though up until that green dot, they closed down the pond, and they put in perforated pipe. They stopped it approximately where that green dot is. And so now, instead of having, you know, the river flowing through the yards, it's now just a constant wet stream. If you go down the street on our side, on the same side, you'll see all the driveways towards the end of the flow, because we're at the end of the runoff, are full of just mud that constantly runs off. Now you go and you put two hundred or less townhouses, a more impervial surface on this clay, okay? And then it's going to keep running off. In order to mitigate this, they need to have Marlboro or soil mitigation plans. They're in here in the, in the stormwater management manual. In order, they have to dig down until, because it comes in different depths, I guess that's how dinosaurs died, is that they have to dig down until they don't hit it anymore, in order to build on it. When they built the old line bank, they pounded in piers, long poles, for six months, in order to make it stable. When you drive down three oh one, if you look at the right-hand corner, it is sinking, and it has been. Okay? So to, I want it on the record, that if they go through with this, that the people who move in there, if they have problems, we have problems in our houses. Levitt built on clay. I mean, he wasn't perfect. And we have problems.
No, he wasn't.
No, he wasn't.
No, for a lot of reasons.
And, right, and our, yes, exactly, a ton. And I know what you're talking about. And he, and you know, our houses have more cracks and moved. They actually, you know, you can sense it with a pencil on a counter or something. So to allow this development to go in before, one, they, or even approve, approve anything, they need to produce their soil core samples. I know they dug them, because I saw them, and I would have the pictures, except for I can't remember what device they're on. And there's a lot of pictures. But I'll find them, and I'll email them to you.
Okay.
Of the samples. And I think that this should be, issue should be addressed before any amount of townhouses or commercial zone is taken care of. And you have to ask yourself, you know, why, again, didn't Levitt purchase that particular piece of property, when he purchased everything surrounding it? I think it has to be worse than the surrounding property. Plus, there's an underground aquifer. Plus, there's an underground aquifer that runs across the property, and it's in the topographical maps, that runs down and goes down through the community center. So there's that water issue too. So the water issues are not fixed. They have never been fixed in 30 years. And this is the third owner. I don't anticipate them being fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Are there any questions? So, Mr. Tedesco, you didn't object yet. Are you objecting?
I was still waiting to hear the basis for being introduced. I didn't get that. So I will object now.
Okay. Well, let me just say this. I think what she was saying, she had a narrative, and I think she was talking about this area having Marlboro clay, which is, of course, addressed in the staff report, and which is, of course, addressed in, in the conditions. But that is how she is tying this in.
So if I may, understanding you correctly indicated this is an administrative hearing, the rules of evidence are relaxed, I still want my objection noted for the record, and I will state it under the basis of hearsay unreliability, and we've had no ability even to cross-examine and prepare this document.
Okay. So let me do this. We are going to accept Ms. Snyder's exhibit into the record for the probative value that it may have with regard to, with regard to the Marlboro clay issue in this area. I will note your objection, counsel, for the record so that the issue is preserved on the basis of inability to cross-examine and to authenticate the document that's submitted. Okay. Opponent will be marked and accepted into the record as opponent's exhibit number one. Okay. Terry Rogers.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Terry Rogers, and I am the president of the Community Association of South Bowie, as well as a business owner that has a business located in the Pointa Ridge Professional Center, which is adjacent to the Amber Ridge development. I approached the planning board as president of the CASB, which consists primarily of citizens of Pointa Ridge. It's a community eminently impacted by the Amber Ridge development. The circumstances under which I stand before you are very unique, and dare I say, unusual. Unusual in the fact that the Bowie City Council voted to take a position, voted not to take a position on this development, which is within the city's planning district, and impacts, has impacts on the city. This development, like the Branch, like the Branch Avenue and Morris Road development, is hampered by the S H A forty-year guideline, forty-year-old guidelines that evaluate traffic congestion and adequacy without considering safety. So I heard it said that the guidelines by which we are governed according to State Highway Administration are forty years old.
I know our, our planning director commented on that earlier. So you heard that? Yeah.
So, and, and traffic conditions are much, much different today than they were forty years ago. And so I would just say that hopefully that something will be done soon to get those updated. Anyway, the, the CASB became aware that the applicant, as a condition of approval, had agreed to make certain conditions to their development. Normally, those conditions would have been presented to the city of Bowie, but from what I understand, they were not. The improvements that the, or the conditions that the applicant, from what I understand, agreed to were the improvement at the, improvement of the intersection at Pointa Ridge Drive and 301, which right now causes a problem when you're coming out of Pointa Ridge Drive to make a northbound turn onto 301. It's one left-turn lane facing two oncoming lanes in that intersection, whereas the left-turning northbound traffic has to make a zigzag to cross over southbound 301 to get to the turn to go north. It's a dangerous situation at that intersection. My understanding was that the developer had agreed to fix that intersection so that there would be two left-turning lanes off of Pointa Ridge Drive onto, onto northbound 301. Second condition would have been that the developer had agreed to put traffic control devices at the Amber Ridge site, which leads into, that has a road that kind of leads into Pointa Ridge Place. Okay? That intersection there, Pointa, well, that road, Pointa Ridge Place, is not a through street. It is, for lack of a better term, it's like an alley that leads through to Pointa Ridge Drive. At the corner of Pointa Ridge Place and Pointa Ridge Drive, there's the U.S. Post Office. And on any given day, the post office itself may have about ten parking spaces, and people park on Pointa Ridge Place in order to go to the post office, and they park on both sides. There's barely enough room to get one car down through Pointa Ridge Place to Pointa Ridge Drive. So when we are talking about traffic coming out of Amber Ridge, approximately, you know, there's 200 homes, so average home has two cars, to come, we, we, we would have had traffic, a traffic control device that would have prevented cars from coming from Amber Ridge onto Pointa Ridge Place. Pointa Ridge Place is not designed to have that kind of volume. And we anticipate that traffic would be coming out of Amber Ridge onto Pointa Ridge Place because it's safer to come down that way to get to Pointa Ridge Drive, to cross over and make the left turn to go northbound. It's safer than having to come out of the one entrance into Amber Ridge Drive, cut across two lanes of traffic in a span of 300 yards to make the left turn. Not a safe traffic movement. But State Highway Administration has said that that area, that, that intersection, Amber Ridge and three, and 301 southbound, does not warrant a traffic signal. So the best that we could hope for was that, you know, we were able to get some concessions out of the concessions and conditions from the developer that would have helped alleviate some of that traffic. Additionally, the developer had indicated a willingness to widen Pointa Ridge Place. That seems to be up in the air now because Pointa Ridge Place is in the city limits of Bowie, and there can be no requirement by the developer to, to impact property that is not within its scope. So I'm just asking that perhaps, you know, the board will consider the, the citizens of Community Association of South Bowie, and particularly the Pointa Ridge area, the current, the concerns we have about the traffic there, and if it's possible, the board could make a condition of approval, the widening of Pointa Ridge Place, if and only if the city of Bowie would agree to that. And that, I think, would not be a perfect situation for the citizens of South Bowie, but we understand, at least I have an understanding of by right development, and we would like to at least know that our voices have been heard and that we have some input into the process, but without our city weighing in on it, this is the best I could do.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Were there questions? Okay. That concludes my sign-up list. Was there anyone else to speak on this matter whose name I did not call? Okay. Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Matthew Tedesco. I know it's been a long day. I don't want to belabor this, but I do have to go through some points that have been raised.
You do.
So if you could just bear with me and indulge me, I will go as fast as I can. Starting with.
Let me ask this, because you've been stuck here all day, and people, does anybody need a five-minute health break or anything, or no?
Do you?
I'm okay for the moment.
I don't want to say.
It looks like, why don't we do that? Why don't we do that? Because, you know, Mother Nature does call. I might need to get up for a second. Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to say no if you said no.
Okay. I'm going to let everyone do what they need to do for a minute or two, few minutes. Mr. Tedesco.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we, I'll wait till the end. We had, we've had some, a bit of bad news, but I'll wait till the end. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
It's like saying I have a secret, but I'm not going to tell you.
No. I'd rather you get through, I'd rather all of us get through our case first.
Okay. Okay. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, on behalf of the applicant, kind of just going in the order of the speakers, Mr. Ideo, I guess the main takeaway from Mr. Ideo's comments and testimonies that he, he wants the crossover. I think I mentioned in my opening that we actually stood in front of everyone and said we were happy to build it. S H A won't let us do it. It's as simple as that. When I said that, you know, Ms. Erica Rigby, who's a deputy district engineer, actually attended one of the city council hearings and spoke and explained S H A's letter in a little bit more detail.
Mr. Minar, you were there for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so she went through, then I think she did a, a very good job of explaining it to the council. I know Mr. Ideo was there too. His, his comment, I think he, I think he was going for his Perry Mason moment here today with, with respect to the crossover. You know, Mr. Tedesco said the crossover is dangerous, but if it wasn't dangerous for a shopping center, why now is all of a sudden dangerous for 200, although it's going to be less than that? Townhomes and 20,000 square feet of commercial. And I think it was kind of like his gotcha moment, but what Mr. Ideo failed to consider is that what S H A said is, and what I was, what I said was, as far as it being dangerous, is that this shopping center warranted the traffic lights. This project, at five times less the traffic impact, no longer warrants the traffic.
Per S H A.
Per S H, per S H A guidelines, as far as the seven, the seven guidelines for.
I'm just saying, you're not, you're not making that up.
No. Absolutely. Absolutely. It's S H, it's S H A's guidelines, and you have to, you have to meet a warrant in order to do a light. And we did a warrant, we did that study.
Warrant study, yeah.
In, to pursue what Mr. Ideo wanted, which was the median break. S H A came back and said the, the light's not warranted, and so you would create a queuing situation on northbound 301 for cars without that light that would back up into southbound 301, waiting to get across, which would be extremely more, far worse than what's permitted right now, which is the existing right-in, right-out. So the reason why, to his question, well, if it was warrant, if it was good enough for the shopping center, which has all these traffic impacts, why is it not good enough for this? And the answer is because there's less traffic and it's no longer warranted.
You just said five times less traffic.
It's five times, just let me, I've got my notes here. I just don't want him to speak. It's five times less, calculating the pass-by trips, it's five times less of an impact over the course of the day than what was originally approved.
Okay.
Mr. Ideo talked, and I mentioned this in my presentation, Mr. Ideo talked about the Pointa Ridge Drive gets all the way backed up. He has trouble getting in and out. I'm not sure where Mr. Ideo's house is, but Pointa Ridge Drive, heading east to get on 301, backs up. I don't dispute that. It backs up because there's a single lane there right now. And as Mr. Rogers said, that single lane, as you're sitting at that light, is staring at two lanes of oncoming traffic from people coming northbound on 301, making a left. And there is a current zigzag. So I want to have this introduced into the record if I could, and we shared this with the city. I think this would be applicant's four. I think. And while we're at it.
Just hold on a second. And describe to us what it is.
So what you're being handed out now is the intersection of Pointa Ridge Drive and U.S. 301 North and Southbound lanes. It's an aerial photograph. The underlying aerial shows the existing conditions, and then what's provided in white and yellow is the improvement that we are going to be required to make per S H A, per your conditions, to that intersection. And what you will see, the yellow line is the realignment of that intersection. So now cars heading east to access northbound 301 will no longer be looking at cars head-on coming across the intersection. There will be two lanes of travel going across the intersection as opposed to one, and there'll be a dedicated right. So what that does.
So that they're more aligned?
They will be aligned.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not quite the same, but it's like, maybe, what is it, Woodmore Road and Church Road, that intersection there, is Church, well, Mr. Ideo you would know, or Mr. Minar you would know. You know, over there where Wood, where Woodmore and goes into, I guess it's Mount Oak? And then there's, because that used to, they weren't aligned before, and now they are.
So that, that median was actually just, was recently restripped.
Okay.
And it created this conflict. As you're sitting at the light heading east, the cars currently.
So the new, the recent restriping created the conflict.
Well, you can kind of see it in the aerial photograph. You see the, the truck heading west, and then you see the van heading east, and they're basically looking at each other.
Yes.
That is going to be fixed.
Plus it's scary.
That is going to be fixed. The fact, now there's one lane, so one lane queues faster and farther than two. We will have two lanes going left, so you, you minimize the queue, you cut it in half because now you've got two lanes as opposed to one.
So where the van is, there'll now be two lanes.
Correct. You can see it.
Right.
So to the, to the bottom of the yellow line, you've got two through lanes and then a right-turn lane.
Okay. For the record, this discussion all pertains to applicant's exhibit four, which is a depiction of the intersection of U.S. 301 Crane Highway and Pointa Ridge Drive.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're clear for the record.
And, and so.
Which I'm accepting into the record as identified. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so what does all this mean? It means that what we currently experience at this intersection will improve, at, at least as far as the queuing goes. The queue shouldn't, won't be as, as far to the, to the east as it currently, because you'll have two lanes as opposed to the one. So the other thing is that these improvements improve the level of service in the AM to a level of service D. I think I may have misspoke earlier, the PM level of service will be mitigated through these improvements. I think I said it may, it may be improved, but it's actually mitigated. I just wanted to be technically correct. My transportation friends to my left were probably wanting, waiting to correct me on that. So, but it is mitigated in the PM. The other exhibit I have, if, it's probably not as dramatic as Mr. Ideo's testimony, but we have kind of a similar exhibit for the Mitchellville intersection with the dedicated right-turn lane. I'm happy to pass that out as exhibit five.
Do we have the letter from S H A or?
It's, it's in your backup.
It's in the backup for the whole thing.
Yes.
Okay. And that's, that's the one, I, that's the one that was presented at the city of Bowie?
There was that one, and there was one dated January, when we threw out another option, which was option three that they refused as well. But the, the main one is that one, December 10th. That's the one where they decided no on the median break.
Okay. That's the one I'm really interested in, because I'd like, if, if, the one that you referenced, where S H A came and talked to the city of Bowie, and you, and I don't necessarily have to have the hard copy if that's not it, but I would like to know, but I would like to have Mr. Minar to confirm that on the record.
Sure. It's, it's in your backup. For some reason, when I printed, when, well, when Suzanne Nickel, who is awesome, printed this backup for me, your backup didn't print with page numbers or something.
Yeah.
But it's in your backup. Finally, Mr. Ideo talked, talked about the, so exhibit five is a similar depiction, but it's the Mitchellville Road 301 North and Southbound. You can see most of those improvements in the median have already been made. We would be required to provide that dedicated right-turn lane, which currently doesn't exist, which is kind of ghosted in.
Okay. So we're accept this, the, the 301 Mitchellville Road aerial. Okay, so we accept this, the, the 301 Mitchellville Road aerial into the record as applicant's exhibit number five?
The final item that I have jotted down from Mr. Ideo's comments deals with what's famously known as the Walmart weave at the Connington Shopping Center, and, you know, the fact that S H A had to make improves. We've heard that a lot with respect to these existing ride-in, ride-out, because it bears repeating, the ride-in, ride-out exists today on Amber Ridge. There's one in the middle of the property, and there's one on the southern side of the property. And those are gonna create issues, and so everyone references back to the, to the Walmart weave that had that movement until S H A put in kind of a barrier to stop cars from doing that. Again, it's comparing apples and oranges from a traffic impact scenario. You're, you're comparing a very large shopping center with a, with a Walmart, with a Giant, with a, with a, other inline stores, with 195, give or take, townhomes and 20,000 square feet of future retail. So it's just not, it's just not a fair comparison, the impact. And, and Ms. Rigby commented on that with respect to S H A's position on the, the basis for denying our study that showed the median break. Ms. Snyder talks about the stormwater and the soils. We have a stormwater concept approval. It was submitted into the record. I will note that the stormwater concept approval talks about the marble clays, it talks about at the time of technical review, it has to be studied. It's been studied. My client in contracting to purchase this property has obtained a 260 or more page geotech study. We have done over 250 borings on this property, which, if you map that out, it's a boring every 10 feet. We know that soil, with all due respect to Ms. Snyder, better than Ms. Snyder knows the soil. We have to submit that with our Soil Conservation, with Soil Conservation District as part of our permitting, as well as D P I. Your, your environmental planning staff acknowledged the outcropping of marble clay, but has also correctly indicated that that's for D P I to determine with our geotech study, which has been submitted to D P I. Mr. Rogers, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Rogers and the position that he put forward here today, because I too share in his, in the uniqueness of how I stand before you, because I can say that in all my time doing projects, especially in and around Bowie, I've never had an experience where they, it's not that they didn't take a position, I just want to clarify, it's not that they didn't take a position, they made a motion to withdraw the application from their agenda. So it, it's not like they said, we're not supportive, we're not, not, we're not for this, we're not against it. They took no action. And so what that resulted in, is, as this board knows, when we work, not only with community, active community groups, non-active community groups, but municipalities in particular, there is a lot of back and forth. And there is a lot of back and forth that goes on with the discussions with municipalities, primarily with municipalities, that go beyond what your staff may impose as conditions. That's what occurred in this case. We and Mr. Rogers alluded to it when he talked about signage on the north side of the Pointer Ridge Place, as well as some improvements on the south side of Pointer Ridge Place and Pointer Ridge Drive. We, in an effort to work with B A P B, address community and citizen concerns, and in the hopes of garnering the city council's support for this application, we stood in front, I stood in front of them and was willing to accept certain requests. All of that got, put me in a very odd situation now that I stand before you, because they took no action on this case, and those are not being moved forward, but Mr. Rogers would still like to see them. So in an effort of good faith to Mr. Rogers and, and him being a member of the Business Park to the South, as well as the president of B A P B and Greater South Bowie, South Bowie Civic Association, I'm willing, my client is willing to proffer the do not enter signs on our side of our property, if it's the will of this board to accept that. On our side, where Pointer Ridge Place intersects with Fife Way, as a, another deterrent for that being a major route, we don't think it will be, but I understand the concern and the perception. So we would be willing to proffer that under, with your approval. The other item that Mr. Rogers spoke to was potential improvements to Pointer Ridge Place and Pointer Ridge Drive. That is a, that part of Pointer Ridge Place is a city street. I can't touch it unless city of Bowie permits it. City of Bowie has taken no action on this case.
Let me ask, go ahead.
If I may, if I may, so what we have, what we are willing to proffer, and again, in a sign of good faith and, and a sign of continuing to work, given the unique circumstances we find ourselves in, I, we have discussed a private, not for your purview, but a private M O U with the Business Park Association, that separate and apart from this plumery plan, because, because that intersection operates at acceptable levels of service. It's, 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 um-
It's E or N?
Be in the AM and C in the PM. So there's no, there's no adequacy trigger that you guys can impose upon us, but we will endeavor to enter into an M O U with Mr. Rogers and his members of the association. And, and kind of the theory there being, if the city were inclined, that we would step up and, and make the improvements that we were talking about previously. But I don't want, I want that separate and apart from this plumery plan, because to me, the city sent a message that they don't want to have any part of this, so. Okay.
So you're proffering to explore that separate and apart from this?
Yes.
Okay, with the, with the business owners and, and, and you'll have some discussions with the city of Bowie, and then, now the proffer about the do not enter, does our transportation division have any comment on that? Yeah, you had to get something in on your last day.
I know, right? Just my luck. For the record, Iften Thompson, the Transportation Section, I actually do not, to my knowledge, I don't have any information regarding the do not enter sign. They just, I received a traffic study that spoke upon what would be the adequacy regarding that intersection.
Yeah. And in fairness, that's 100% correct, this came about in the last 10 days. And it was, it was something that was suggested that it'd be-
I don't think it hurts, and it doesn't, it can't hurt in any way. Well, you're not saying anything, so I don't know.
No, I, I, I think, I think it appeases the perception of that being used, and we're happy to do it.
Right.
As a proffer.
And that's accurate, I just want to make sure, in no way does, I guess it doesn't, because there's no way it hurts.
Instead of like, do not enter, can it be like, not a thoroughway, or not a through street, or something? Because do not enter to me just is like, almost no trespassing, and it sends sort of a bad signal of like, communities around there and interconnectedness. I don't want to have like gated communities and that kind of stuff in this county, because that's, that's not a very-
Yeah.
It's not, it's not cohesive in building an actual community together. So if you can figure out some other language, I, I think that might be a little bit-
Yeah, and again, please, please understand what I'm trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, I totally understand that you don't want cars coming through to-
No, 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 that's, what I'm trying to accomplish is not reneging on something that I stood in front of a body and, and said we would agree to, but the body that actually could impose that to persuade you to do it-
Not doing it.
Took no action.
Yeah.
So now I find myself in a position where I'm trying to proffer to keep the goodwill and the efforts that not only the applicant has made, but the goodwill and the efforts that B A P B-
But you know, or, or, or you know what, I, there are many places that we go to that just says not an entrance.
Yeah.
Not an entrance, yes.
I, I think, I, I think Mr. Rogers would prefer to say, and not to speak for him, do not enter.
Okay, fine.
I, I'm willing to, you know.
Okay, fine. Okay, hold on a second, Mr. Ideo, okay. Okay, go ahead.
But again, that's, that's, that's a proffer from the applicant, as I said, to accommodate something that we acknowledged previously.
That's what Mr. Rogers is saying, that, that you're in agreement with that?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Hi, good afternoon, Brian Bartlett, with the Transportation Planning Section. I think we misunderstood what they meant by the do not enter sign, but when we were reviewing this site, it included access between the property, the subject property and the property to the south. So having a sign that would say that would, would impact that. Maybe the, the solution is something, as, as Mr. Dorner suggested, like not a through, so that those cars can still travel back and forth. But, excuse me, the review that we looked at, looked at that connection as well.
Okay, all right.
I've, I've, I think I've been heard on it.
Yeah, you've been heard, you, you, there's the rock and there's the hard place, okay. Okay. Mr. Ideo, and this is it, because we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up?
For the record, Rosario Ideo, and I live at 16403 Pointer Ridge Drive in Bowie, Maryland. I'm sorry that I may have gotten Mr. Tedesco a little upset. Maybe I left a word out. What I meant to say was that Mr. Tedesco said that S H A said that the crossover was dangerous.
Yeah, that's fine.
Not that he said it.
That's fine.
That G S A. And the, the so-called mitigating of, mitigating traffic that S H A has, has suggested, doesn't really mitigate, because the traffic that comes off of Mitchellville Road is going to stop in front of the entrance of, of Amber Ridge. So it still blocks the entrance. Also, at, at, in the evening, when the traffic is coming home, you're gonna have people coming in from the northbound that wants to get into Amber Ridge, and they're gonna try to make a left, a right-hand turn into Pointer Ridge Place. And the people who are coming south on 301 are gonna go down 197, down Mitchellville Road, up at Pittsfield Lane, on Pointer Ridge Drive, and the people from the north and the south are gonna meet, and there's a backup. Backup towards 301, backup on Pointer Ridge Drive. And don't tell me that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
That's, that, I'm saying, that it's a problem, you know, the, not, I know each person has a right to develop his, his property, but the, the best solution for this property is that it doesn't get developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ideo. Okay, are you done, Mr. Tedesco? Okay, okay. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Diaz Campbell, do you have anything else to add?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay. Do you all have anything else to add on the transportation issue?
Good afternoon, for the record, Brian Bartlett, with the Transportation Planning Section. Afterwards, I can speak with Mr. Rogers and Mr. Ideo, and we can get them to contact information with S H A and Department of Public Works and Transportation regarding like the neighborhood traffic mitigation program, or the S H A intersection studies, and they can get more information about this.
Okay.
So I have a question, since, since staff didn't do an analysis based on the do not enter, would that still apply if you just have not a through street?
Hello, Iften Thompson, again, with Transportation Section. I think an analysis would still be helpful in order to determine whether or not that would be needed.
Madam Chair, Andrej Chakluyan, Planning Director. What Transportation is saying is that we cannot comment on what it would mean if that was put up, because the-
We haven't studied it.
The site was studied with that as an access.
Yeah, that's, that's what they, that was what Mr. Barnett Woods said, but, um-
Okay, I'm sorry. One more thing for the record, I just want to clear things up. I think what Mr. Burton was referring to when he said how old the transportation guidelines are, is they were actually adopted, or enacted-
Initially.
Initially 40 years ago, but we recently did an update in 2012.
Yeah, I thought I called that, okay.
I want to thank Ms. Chakluyan for that, that was in my notes and I forgot to say.
Thank you.
2012, they were just recently adopted.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because I knew they came before us, okay.
Board have, legally have anything else to add?
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move that we adopt 4-19032 and TCP 001-201701, as well as- I had a microphone. As well as those variations. Set forth on Amber Ridge, section 24-128B, 7A, 24128B, section 12, and that we adopt findings of staff as modified by applicant's exhibit number one, in which applicant withdrew the request of variance from 27-548H. And based on this withdrawal, the analysis findings provided on pages 24 to 27 of the technical staff report shall be revised to reflect a change or the withdrawal from the request for that variance. Modify as well the findings to reflect that the stormwater management is valid until February 5th, 2023, and revise the findings to include paragraph 12 of exhibit number three, the added portion relating to the trail. Applicant, which reads, the facility shall include a trail on public and private property from Pittsfield Lane to Fife Way, as well as any other facilities agreed upon between the applicant and the Department of Parks and Recreation, D P R, prior to approval of the D S P. The total value of the public and private facility shall be in accordance with D P R's formula for determining the value of recreation of facilities. So that would be both a finding and a condition, and that we adopt the, the staff recommendations and conditions as modified by applicant's exhibit number three. And there were two proffers. I would disapprove of the first proffer, but I would encourage the applicant to speak with the city of Bowie, to see if we can get some consensus that takes into account the issues that were raised today with regards to traffic and safety. And with regards to the fifth, or the second proffer, that the applicant work, again, also with the Business Park Association and the city of Bowie, to see if they can reach some sort of resolution as to the business park.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, is that a second?
Second of the question.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Question away.
Disapprove of the first proffer, I'm trying to get-
Yeah, I disapprove of the first proffer, because the staff has not had the opportunity to evaluate or make an analysis. So my suggestion is the proffer would be for the applicant to, to work with the city of Bowie to see if they come up with a solution to that.
Because, and let me ask this question. Our staff has not had the chance to, to evaluate that, but if, if, I heard Mr. Tedesco, he said the level, the level of service was, would be over there?
So the intersection of Pointer Ridge Place and Pointer Ridge Drive, AM is B and PM is C.
Okay, so I can't see, traffic analysis is not my thing, but I can't see how it could take it anywhere, that, that sign could take it anywhere to an E or an F. I just, I just can't see how it could change that much.
Good afternoon, Brian Bartlett, Transportation Planning. So it may not, but there may be other effects, so if people can't go in, yeah, unintended consequences, people would loop around, and those are the kinds of things that, you know, one domino.
If it matters, the proffer and the, what we talked about was a do not enter sign facing north for just cars exiting the site, not going up north to Pointer Ridge Place, but-
Does that help?
I would say that it's a nice gesture, but you should just take it back afterwards and kind of work it out if you wanted, but-
We're, we're happy to be very interested.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's fine.
But, yeah, I want to-
So you'll, you'll go look at it. We won't impose it.
Nothing binding.
But what was, but I'm not clear on the, on the second one, then, that what you're going, Mr. Geraldo?
The second one was what was, was a proffer that the applicant was gonna work with the business owner association-
But that wasn't a, it wasn't a condition-
Yeah, I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be a condition, I'd rather it just, we hear you, they hear us, we're gonna try to figure something out privately.
Okay, okay. So then we don't have, have either of those, okay?
Right.
And then just before we second anything, can we just turn to legal counsel? Can we turn to legal counsel before we vote, then?
Yeah.
Just for any clarifications they might have?
I don't think there are any clarifications necessary, I think we touched on everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Um, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Um, yeah, we really already had the discussion, but I just want to say this to the citizens, you know, it's very hard when you're sitting up here. We're appointed here to, to do a job, and we have a job to do, we have to consider a number of factors. We consider the testimony of everyone who comes before us, we consider the application, we consider the analysis by our, our professional and technical staff, including, you know, the planners, the, the transportation planners, everybody. We get the referrals back from all the other agencies to whom we send the, the application. We hear from the municipalities, and we have to balance all those things, including the evidence that's submitted into the record at the hearing, and then we have to make a decision, but always our decisions have to be in conformance with the laws that are enacted, which we do not enact, but we have to abide by them. So now we have guidelines that are in place, we have to work with other agencies, we have the SHA who's saying one thing that, and we can't go around SHA. We have so many different things that we're trying to balance, but we always hear every single person that comes before us and try to wrestle with, with the various, the varied opinions and presentations that come before us. So that's, you know, yeah, very often they're competing, we balance, that's what we do, we have to balance some competing interests and then make a decisions that, make a decision that is in conformance with all the laws that are before us, including those that have been interpreted by the highest courts in the state and the highest court of the land. And that is the position that we find ourselves in week in and week out. So I think what we heard here today, we've heard some citizens' concerns, I, where hopefully that some of, hopefully some of the proffers that are not part of our conditions, because they can't be, will, when worked out with the city, and perhaps even SHA will be of help, including, um, you know, and the issue of, of the stormwater management as well. Um, you know, hopefully that addresses the concerns of the marble clay and, and things of that nature as well. But, um, anyway, we thank everyone for coming, we thank everyone for their input, and is all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, pursuant to section 3-305B12, the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, we need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of discussion of a personnel matter.
So move.
Oh, before, um, yes, let me say this, before, we have, withdraw the motion in the second for a second. I need to say this, so I just got confirmation, I am so sorry to have to report that we just learned that our former chief of development review division, Ari Stoughton, has passed away today. Just a wonderful, hard-working human being for our planning department, who was always helpful, always so very helpful, and it just breaks my heart, it just really does. Luckily, he had the chance to retire for a few years and seize life, and it's just, it's just a reminder to everyone to seize life while you can. We remember Ari Stoughton, we love Ari Stoughton, and we are so grateful for his services to the planning department and for Rogers County. So, again, I'm going to reiterate my motion, I mean, not my motion, but pursuant to section 3-305B12, we need a motion to go into closed session for purposes of, of a personnel matter.
So move.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion to ratify the action taken in closed session.
So move.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All in favor? No, you said the, the opposed, the ayes have it. Um, is there any other business to come before planning board today?
No, Madam Chair.
Planning board is adjourned, and it's not official. Now it's adjourned, okay.